We'll call the July 16th County Commission Meeting to order. And we'll stand for a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Holloway.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item of business is to review and approve the agenda. Does anyone see anything on the agenda they wish to change or amend in any way?
Mr. Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is the consent agenda. Holly Hennes.
Good morning Commissioners. Holly Hennes, Commission Office Manager. For full public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-contraditional and routine items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the Board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a Board member or a citizen. Today I have placed the following items for your consideration. Approval of the minutes from the July 2nd, 2013 meeting. Approval of the vouchers in the amount of $2,626,233.32. Approval and Chairman's signature of the third quarter state and local agreements as submitted by emergency management. Approval of the permit to occupy the right-of-way for the Black Hills Back 40 Mountain Bike Race as submitted by the Highway Department. To declare diagnostic scanner surplus for the purpose of trade as submitted by the Highway Department. And finally, to recognize the volunteers for the month of June 2013 as submitted by the Human Resource Department.
Does anyone there wish to remove any items from the consent agenda? If not, do we have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item is items from the public. And I would just reiterate that there will be no comment. The Board will listen and there will be no action taken during these items on any issues brought forth that are not properly noticed on the agenda. We do have a group here and Holly has had a sign-up sheet. I don't know if other people had the opportunity to sign it, but so far we have Lorene Hunt as a person registered to speak. So Lorene, if you're here, would you come forward, please?
I just have two short questions. And I know that you can't, we can't have a two-way discussion on things. And those of us that sit here feel like we just are not having any communication back and forth. Maybe you've covered it in some things in previous meetings that I didn't attend, but I'd like to know the exact reason that you saw there was a problem in the ag classification on the 40 acres part of it. And maybe in your summary or something, you can kind of explain that to us. And then I wonder if equalization didn't get it right on 40 acres, how are they going to get it right on 160 acres? Seems to me there must be a humongous problem in the Department of Equalization.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we'll move on to item 12, and that is items from the chair. And I placed this on the agenda because yesterday we received in the Commission Office a list of questions prepared by groups that have been meeting on this issue. And the questions are such that in my discussion with the folks that brought them forward, that again, as Lorene pointed out, to have a dialogue at this point in time would be very difficult to manage. And so I would acknowledge the receipt of those questions. We will review them. And those that we can, we will answer. And those that we can't, we will leave unanswered. But in addition, I would just simply add that I know that there are people working on the legislative side of this issue. And I was told that a busload of people are going to the July 25th meeting that will be held in Pierre at nine o'clock central time to deal with ag assessment issues. So this is not going to disappear. It will continue to be a public dialogue. So I just wanted to let you know that. Next item is the timber taxation classification information. And Commissioner Troutman will turn it over to you.
Thank you. One of our frustrations has been trying to figure out how to really handle the forest classification when we are looking at ag properties. And so I've been doing a little bit of research on this and talked to a few people and come up with some interesting information. And I asked them to come today. And when we're done, I'll kind of summarize it and propose a possibility of something that we can do as a county. So our first speaker is going to be Frank Cross. And he's a Board Member of the Tree Farm Association here in the area. He's retired from the U.S. Forest Service. Served 34 years in that. He is a former district ranger here in the Black Hills. And he was also in charge of the Forest Health Program from Regional Two. And Frank, if you'd come up and talk a little bit about tree farms and so on.
All right. Thank you again for, I was here one other time. Thanks for inviting me back to talk a little bit more about this ag.
Please identify yourself.
I'm sorry. My name is Frank Cross. And also while I identify myself, I might also mention that Bill Coburn's here. He's going to speak a little bit. He's also with Tree Farm, and he's also representative of Nyman Timber Products. And Bob Baker, he's going to help with the presentation, and he's with Baker Forest Products. So anyway, thanks again for inviting me back. You know, I gave a short presentation a while back about this issue. And anyway, I prepared a PowerPoint here this morning. And I think I'll just run through that real quick and then let these guys take over from there. Anyway, South Dakota Family Forest. South Dakota Family Forest represents tree farmers in Pennington County. We are a private nonprofit profit 501(c)(3) organization. It's a national organization, and we kind of umbrella underneath the American Forest Foundation, which is a national organization. We provide assistance to family forests across the country. There's tree farms in every state in the Union, I believe. And we provide certification as a sustainable forest through a third-party auditing program. Price Waterhouse came out a few years ago here to the Black Hills. And we actually took a representative sample of several tree farms to make sure they were working under sustainable forest practices, that they had objectives, that they were meeting Clean Water Act standards, so forth, so on. So anyway, again, we're a private organization that does those kinds of things. And I just jotted down a few things that I felt that were kind of common between Tree Farm and maybe some of the things that the county's responsible for as well. And public health and safety is one of them. We are concerned about that as well as the county. The natural beauty, quality of life in areas, we want to try to maintain tree farms as tree farms as much as possible. There's so much temptation to subdivide when, you know, and break up the land. And we're trying to maintain forests as much as possible. Forest health, and when I say forest health, you almost got to define that, but when I say it, I mean the threat of insects and disease and fire. Try to reduce that risk. Financial responsibility. One of the things that tree farmers, a lot of people that have forested areas before they get into tree farm, don't realize is that they can actually get a return on their investment if they manage their property as a tree farm. And a healthy business environment. Again, I think that's something that we have in common with the county. Each individual tree farm is an individual business. And they spur other businesses. They hire contractors to do thinning. They fire contractors to harvest their timber. And so, and they have to keep books and so forth and so on, just like any other business. Okay, now to kind of get down into the guts of this, how will a change in acreage to qualify as ag affect tree farmers? Well, they're going to have less money to invest in their property with the increase in tax. And some landowners, that's going to affect more than others, depending on their financial situation, of course. But in general, there's going to be fewer dollars, I believe, to invest back into the properties. And this picture here, this slide, I don't know if you can see it, it's a little bit blurry, but it shows, you know, some bent-over trees from snow damage, you know, heavy stocking in the trees, dense forest that's in a real bad shape from a forest health standpoint. From a fire standpoint, that's a very dangerous situation with all that ladder fuel there. And from a forest health standpoint, from insect or disease look at that, it's a very dangerous situation. This happens to be on a tree farm that we went through this area and thin this, you know, a couple of years ago. So the other possible effect it's going to have on tree farmers is some tree farmers, I believe, will probably have to sell their property because of the increase in tax. And now that could result, that may not have a big change, other than you've got a new landowner there. And it could be a new landowner from outside of this area. And that kind of falls in, that kind of leads to that last bullet there, which I'll skip over to another one for a minute. A change of culture and custom. You know, as you all know, I was gone from the Black Hills for 10 years, went to Colorado for a while after being a district ranger here, came back after 10 years. And been here for six now. And I saw a lot of change in that 10-year period. And a lot of it's good. And in fact, you probably can't really put a value judgment up because it depends on the individual. But things will change if you sell properties. A lot of the rural settings, the rural people will be replaced by people maybe more urban. And I've seen a lot of that in the last 10 years. Okay, then the subdivision is another possibility. And I'll get into that just a little bit more, a little later here. Okay, then, so what is the extent of the issue here with tree farms? In Pennington County, 16 of the 22 tree farms in the county will lose their ag tax status more than likely. Taxes to the county will increase from $1,500 to $75,000. That's quite an increase. But that's also a lot of money out of these people's pockets. This data, I just want to put this last bullet in there just to emphasize that that data does not count the landowners who are actively managing private forests that are not members of Tree Farm. And I don't know how many of them there are out there. You know, it'd be an interesting thing to look at, but I know there's a lot of them out there that are not members of Tree Farm. The state also has a program called Forest Stewardship Program, and they don't have to belong to Tree Farm. And so there are a lot of landowners out there that have forested properties that are not part of Tree Farm. So the, you know, so that's just a partial picture of what some of the effects are there. Okay, the effects on the decreased investments. Increased tax decreases expendable income. Ultimately, dollars invested in acres managed depends on the landlord's financial health. I already mentioned that. Environmental effects of fewer investments include increased risks from bark beetles and fire. I already mentioned that as well. This picture here is from the Black Forest Fire in Colorado this year. They destroyed 400 homes. And I don't know how many millions of dollars that fire cost. But that's a ponderosa pine forest, not unlike our forest here in the Black Hills. And then the last bullet there, reduced growth and quality of wood products. That's something, you know, that as a forester and if I was a landowner that had my own private forest, I got two acres. So I'm not really that much involved in that. But the, when you thin trees, it not only improves the health of the trees, not only reduces the risk from fire, it increases the growth of those individual trees and makes them a more desirable product in the future. I mean, I'm sure you've seen the tree rings, you know, where they're really dense and some of them where they're really wide apart. And when trees are thinned out, they grow way faster. And you can get forest products from them a lot quicker. So, you know, management of the forest is important from a number of aspects. Increased risk from bark beetles and wildfire, it's more effects. More red and dead forests. Again, this picture here is from that Black Forest Fire in Colorado. Firefighting costs in the millions of dollars. I don't know how much that fire cost. I'm sure it was multi-millions of dollars. But we've had some of those kinds of fires here. You know, I saw Danny Gordon this morning, and every time I look at Danny, I remember we were on the Westbury Trails Fire together. And I had a picture in my office in Rapid City, the Forest Service Office, of that fire crest in the hills. I mean, it's at night, you know, and it's just a glow, a red glow and flames shooting out of how high in the air and then Rapid City in the foreground. But, you know, those kinds of fires can and will happen. And so with increased subdivisions of the forest and, you know, that kind of potential for fire, you know, it's just a real concern, I think, that we all face every day. Anyway, the cost, increased risk to public health and safety. And I don't want to, out of respect for the firefighters that were killed in Arizona, I don't want to belabor that, but there is a risk to both firefighters and to the public, you know, from wildfire. And again, I don't want to belabor that too much, other than the fact that it is a real risk, and we just need to be aware of that. And if we don't manage our forests, you know, that risk increases considerably. Reduction in timber output available to industry. The timber industry here, again, this is one of those cultural changes and economical changes that you've seen over time. I mean, when I first got the hills back in 87, I think there was like 60 mills in the hills. And now there's just a handful. There were several large businesses, timber industries here. Now there's just one, I think Nyman's still considered a small business. So things have changed in that regard. And right now, the timber industry with the housing prices down, the economy slow, they're not making lots of money. And so things can affect them a lot more. Any little negatives can affect them a lot more than it would under a good economy. So there is a potential reduction in timber output available to industry. I heard one time there was like 400,000 acres of private forests in the Black Hills. That's a lot. I mean, the whole forest has about a million. So that's a considerable amount of acres of private forest. And they depend upon that private forest for timber to run their mills. And without the timber industry, we lose a tool, you know, to manage the forest. And I, you know, to me, again, that is one of the biggies. Because without that tool, you've got to pay for, you know, thinnings, and it's going to be a lot more costly than having somebody pay you. Increased complexity of firefighting. That picture there, again, is from the Black Forest Fire in Colorado. And you can see the houses that were burned down there and kind of end of the road, kind of a cul-de-sac situation. I mean, those kinds of things, you know, can happen with subdivision. And subdivision, you know, is a possible outcome for a lot of people for this, if this policy is implemented. Reduction in open space. You know, I think that's one of the things we take for granted here. Again, when I was in Colorado, Jefferson County in Colorado, I think they owned over or close to a half a million acres. They just bought outright. And part of the reason they did that because they valued open space around the city of Denver and the subdivisions around Denver. And so they took that out of the tax base. They thought that was important to them. And they actually did thinning, you know, and that sort of thing out of taxpayers' expense. And it was, so we have a different situation here to some extent, but I think in some ways we need to, if we start valuing our open space more now, and a lot of these tree farms provide that, you know, that is definitely to our advantage. Negative effects on tourism. Again, tourists come here a lot largely because of the trees and the forests and the open spaces. And if it's all subdivided and, you know, a lot of that's going to be changed. Increased wildlife conflicts. As you know, when mountain lions come into Rapid City, they need to be killed. You know, when a lot of subdivisions occur out there and there's a lot of wildlife encroaching on those subdivisions, you know, it just causes conflicts. And then cultural changes, and I already mentioned that. Okay, with that, I'm going to sit down and let Bob come up. He's got a few things to say, and then Bill's going to touch on some of these recommendations.
Commissioners, while Bob is coming up, I just want to mention that Bob is, he and his brother and son run Baker Timber. It's a 52-year-old company. It's here in Pennington County. They're third and fourth-generation timbermen and sawmillers. And in talking with him, there's some real effects that I think are important for us to understand.
Thank you, Nancy. Bob Baker, Baker Timber. I have some real concerns with this, and Frank has covered most of it already. Baker Timber employs 30 people on a year-round basis, give or take one or two. And over 50% of our volume that we run through our mills comes off private landowners. Most of the timber comes off tracks that are smaller than 640 acres, and some of it comes off tracks as small as five acres. I see this move that will force a lot of the older local landowners to either sell out or subdivide their property. And I think a lot of timber acres are going to be taken out of the management thing. And along with what Frank said, I just see some disastrous results as, I think, with so much property being taken out of what I would consider forest management that will lead to further problems with bugs and, of course, fire. As you folks can already tell, I'm not a public speaker, but this move really concerns me as an individual and a business owner here, as I think that it'll have a negative effect on the forest. And I know one of the problems that people consider is on the eastern part of Pennington County, you know, a typical commercial forest rotation is a 15- to a 20-year project where you don't see an annual income. On the west half of the county, I would suspect that we could narrow that down to maybe a 12- to 15-year rotation, but it's huge compared to an annual typical agricultural crop. I have to back up a little bit when Mr. Peterson said, I was hoping to open it up to a little back-and-forth conversation and a few questions from you folks, but that can't happen, I guess. So I guess that's the gist of my concern. I just honestly believe that we'll see a further reduction in manageable lands if this goes through because of development. Thank you.
And Bob, can I ask you a question? How do you think this will affect you and your business?
Well, we've been involved with lots of small parcels, and three or four different times we went in to a homeowners association and a subdivision. And to be quite honest, Nancy, to develop a forest plan and to do any commercial work in a subdivision, the hands-on and the amount of people that you deal with, it just comes to the point where it's a loser for business. And you go from what is good to a forest, to each individual that, you know, this certain tree over here means something to them, and we can't cut that one, and we have to cut this one. And there may be product involved, there may be just raw output of expense with no It comes from a forest management practice to a micromanagement thing to where there isn't enough markup in the process to cover your costs. So it just, it kills the industry when we get to these, Frank has two acres. I hate to insult anyone, but to go and manage two acres and to mobilize the equipment, to get somebody out ahead of the game and mark it and get it ready for harvest, there's not enough volume there to do that. And that's what I see coming is with this kind of a tax increase, I think one example, and, you know, our property isn't even on a tree farm basis. We don't have a plan for it. But I can prove to every one of you that we manage the timber on it, and we have the stumps on the property to prove it. And we have the volume recorded that we've taken off. As far as actively having our property signed up as a tree farm, we don't. I think that there's a lot of folks behind me here that are in the same boat. I would like to see if something has to be changed, that it's a well-advertised deal to where people have the opportunity and there is, and they're almost flooded with the information, to where they can either get their property qualified as a managed property. And if they are not interested after a two- or three- or four-year period, then I guess they don't qualify for wanting to manage their property. I honestly think it's just going to hurt the folks, and beyond that, it's going to hurt the forest. So, thank you.
Bill Coburn has been real active in mountain pine beetles, so that's how we've gotten to know each other. He was born and raised here in Deadwood.
Here in Deadwood?
In Deadwood.
Oh, in Deadwood.
Well, in this area in Deadwood, sorry. He has a BS in forestry at the University of Montana and a BS in other things as well. He's pretty good at it.
He might as well sit down.
He's practiced forestry in the Black Hills for 37 years, worked in the forest products industry since 1981. He's a member of the Lawrence County Planning and Zoning, and he's also been a part of the committee that put together the latest Lawrence County Comprehensive Plan. Volunteer firefighter, and I mentioned, he's certainly been very valuable to us in the mountain pine beetle epidemic. And he is currently the Chair-elect for the South Dakota Family Forest. Thanks, Phil, for coming.
Thanks, Nancy. I'm Bill Coburn. I'm a forester for timber, or Nyman Timber Company in Spearfish. First of all, I'd like to thank you guys for allowing us to testify today. And I think, as we sent a letter to you here a couple of weeks ago, and I think we all are struggling with what is ag and what can we do about it. And a lot of the stuff that you guys have talked about isn't new. It's been talked about for a long time, not only in Pennington County, Lawrence County, all the other counties, the Black Hills, but in other states. I've talked to the Extension Forester for the State of Montana, and they struggle with it. But there's a lot of good ideas out there. I've talked to some people in SODA. There are people that are working on this, and... There are people that are working on this and I think as far as an ag tax and specifically talking about forestry, before we go too far down one road, I would strongly recommend a group of people, maybe even coming out of this ag tax committee in Pierre, to get together and talk this thing through because this cookie cutter approach really doesn't work. It doesn't work for the legacy landowners that have been here ever since the 1800s. A lot of them are going to disappear if, in fact, this tax goes through and you folks don't rescind it. And that gets back to what Frank was talking about, culture and custom. I mean, the culture and custom in our county does change. But as policymakers, you guys have the ability to hasten that change or to slow it and to actually direct it in good ways or direct it in bad ways. And I see the policy that you guys done with the acreage increase is going to cause some of this culture and custom and extra cost to the county go the wrong direction. We talked about the Black Forest Fire in Colorado. That is a great example. I spent this weekend going around in Pennington County and Meade County looking at some of these subdivisions. We have a situation in the Black Hills where that could happen here. That was a 14,000-acre fire, burned 502 homes and two lives. And the reason why it could happen here is that we haven't done a very good job of planning in the past. We've encouraged the type of development in the areas around the Black Hills that occurred in Colorado. And by going to 160 acres for forested lands and all ag lands, you're encouraging more of this, not less of it. And I want to put it in perspective is that you guys now are also helping pay for those landowners to cut and chump mountain pine beetle-infested trees. You're using county resources for these subdivisions that you're actually encouraging them to have more. And if you left them alone and you kept them in whole, most of these landowners are doing it on their own. And they're managing their property, they're keeping it healthy. Like Bob said, it is, I deal with landowners all the time and it's very difficult to go into a subdivision and try to do anything in there for those folks and try to get their property thin. They've got too many improvements, there's too many restrictions, too many people want to have a piece of the pie. So, I mean, those are things that really have to think this thing through before you go too far down this road. So, we're recommending to rescind your vote and to keep your 40-acre minimum until some people get together and actually think this thing through a lot farther than what has been done already. Pennington County probably has the largest number of forest landowners in the state. They have a very valuable position here to take leadership on how to deal with this thing. And dealing with it in a cookie cutter manner like was done, isn't the right way to handle this. You need to look at it and go deeper into this and actually figure out what is the best approach to try to maintain the custom and culture of this county as long as we can. That's why people love to come here. It's the custom and the culture and the way everything looks. And if we change it too dramatically, too fast, we're going to find out where we're going to have a Black Forest right in the middle of our, in Pennington County. Thank you.
Just kind of a wrap-up here. It's been extremely frustrating, not only for the commissioners and not only for this group of commissioners, but also for the Equalization Department to figure out when someone comes to us in equalization hearings, what really constitutes a forest program. And while we've talked about some of that with these last three gentlemen, to me, that is a critical thing that we need to deal with as commissioners and take a leadership role in. We're frustrated with it, we don't handle it well, and it does make a difference in how we will approach our equalization hearings if we come up with some kind of program that has parameters of what a forestry program is and what we will use as our criteria to qualify that under the ag designation. And moving forward, we're still going to have that ag designation and we need to take a look at that. And I would like to see us spend some time researching, and I would think we would start with the Equalization Office, to research in Montana, Colorado, surrounding areas, Wyoming, where they are struggling with the same thing. And maybe we can come up with some really good suggestions and ideas that will help us to handle it better. Because that is not, that's a frustration to us. It was something that we have not really approached and looked at and we need to, and I would like to encourage our board to do that. So.
Okay, thank you Nancy. We'll move on now to item 14, which is the Pennington County Provisional Budget. And Julie Pearson, are you in the room? Thank you folks for coming.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I would suggest since you got this captive audience here that they stick around and find out why we're going to spend $84 million for next year's budget, coming right out of your pocket.
They certainly are welcome.
Quite obvious, the senators.
They don't care, just go, how much they pay.
Mm-hmm.
They don't want to pay anymore.
And I don't want to either.
That's right, you neither.
Yep.
Last page, I heard her say that.
Apologize for not being here. Before you today, and we have it available on our computer here to make any changes so we can kind of, today is the drop deadline date unless you want to have a special meeting to approve the provisional budget for 2014. The budget is set, has met the commissioner's budget goals. It includes the 2.1% COLA and merit increases for our employees. It phases out the B-step that was instituted a couple of years ago, I think. A 5% increase in healthcare premiums, slight operation increases, and finally, an estimated frozen mill levy for all county taxed funds. The state will not finalize our property and utility values until the end of August. They're supposed to send us those by the last Monday in August. So, the values that we are using are from the equalization file before hearings and as the estimated factor. So, it's as up-to-date a values as we can have to date. The provisional budget is summarized on the Means of Finance tab, which is up here for all to see. The total budget for 2015 is $83,474,676. Mis-silienous revenues totals, which are everything but current property taxes, totals Property tax revenues that you will be using for the entire budget are $37,367,17. Cash reserves being used totally are $8,136,67. And we are not using tax dollars available for the current year at $1.3 million. The mill levies are frozen at last year's mill levy or less. Does anybody have any questions? Also on this, if you scroll down, yeah, scroll down to the second page, you can see that the levies are approximately the same. I see a .04 change, which I'll have to adjust down once you finish. We'll need some finalization there. And your other ones. It's the way you round is why that .01 change on County General. County Fair, the reason that is less is because the requests came in and I just levied the exact dollars. Now, I would like to call your attention to accumulated building, if you go back up. You see on accumulated building, to match the zero levy increase, County General, accumulated building, and County Fairgrounds are under county consolidated. But I froze each one individually. And to do that, because of the change in our payments this year, for our master plan bonds, all three of them, there's a slight change and a reduction in the amount the federal government is reimbursing us, we're picking that up. We are needing to use $182,500 in cash reserves. However, if you scroll back down, thank you, Holly, my assistant Holly, you will see that we could move that to County General, probably still freeze the levy using a part of the County Fairgrounds that we're not using and take the rest out of County General reserves. Still having a zero net change for county consolidated only instead of individually by fund, which would just leave more money in your accumulated building for future building projects. So, I would like to call that to your attention to see if you want to direct me to make a change there. And if there are any other questions, the budget summary is attached in the file and you gave that to them, Holly. The revenues in detail have been given to you and is there any other questions?
Mr. Chair. So, Julie, what you're saying is that the $182,500 in cash reserves under accumulated building, we could take some of that from General rather than doing reserves? I need to have you re.
Yes. What you can do is because accumulated building, County Fairgrounds, and County General are in what you see as county consolidated, and what, after discussing with Holly, we decided to impress the change to zero, the frozen levy by fund. But you could do it by just county consolidated, which you would then use up the .005, which is very minor, in County Fair, and take the remainder of the $182,500 from County General reserves. We just weren't sure which way you wanted to freeze the levy. County General reserves as estimated with this budget as it sits is at 20.20 in cash balance at estimated. So, it could, General could stand the entire amount or we could net it to zero. Still meeting the budget goals, it's just on county consolidated rather than on each fund within county consolidated, if the board wants that.
Do you want to deal with that issue as we go or make a list of them or what?
If you want to leave it as is, you make no motions. If you want to change it, you can just direct me and it's just an interpretation of the commissioner's budget goal. At the end, you would still have a zero increase in county consolidated rather than by fund.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to clarify one question, but the fairgrounds is a special mill levy unto itself.
It is under county consolidated.
But it's still being, it's still a special.
It's a special fund.
Fund.
Yes.
And it's still a special mill levy and it's showing on our tax sheet as a special mill levy.
Yes.
So, how can we take that and use it for other building projects with it being a special?
Because it's under, it's a county consolidated, but it's a special revenue fund, just like accumulated building.
But then are we going to continue the special levy taxes against the public?
You don't special levy, they're under county consolidated. What we show on the tax notice can is required by law.
That we show fairgrounds as special levy as is required by state statutes?
Mm-hmm. If you look at your tax notice, all the funds are.
But I think, I think what you're saying is that you would actually move that .005 up to County General. Isn't, is that right?
Yeah, I'd move it up. What I would do is allow accumulated building fund itself have that much of an increase.
Okay.
County Fair would then be even Steven and, or it would show the negative five and then County General would still remain at zero. We would just use the additional money to.
Accumulated building.
To come from cash reserves in County General.
So, for Commissioner Davis's concern, the levy that would show up on the property tax notices would be, for a County Fair, would be this .073.
Yes. And County General would stay the same. The accumulated building would go up the 005 if you want. So, it would be 568 and it would show a positive change to this .005. And, but County Consolidated would then remain at 5.210, which is what last year's is. And I believe County General can stand actually the whole $182,500. The .005 is minimal.
Mr. Chair. Yes. Julie, when you started, you said something about the utilities and one other revenue source that you hadn't got, you won't get the notice on that until the end of August?
Correct. The final values, we don't have final values yet.
Okay.
There are several stages that we use, that we produce a value. We produce the, which is the one we use, and then we give prior to any equalization hearings. Then you go through all your hearings, then those people have a right to appeal to OHE and Pierre. Once the OHEs are final and we get utility values, which are required by the fourth Monday in August, we rarely get them on that timeframe, that will give us a final value. that will give us a final value. In the meantime, also the factor changes. So, we have to apply the approved factor at that time, which is figured across the state at an 85% median or something for values. Shannon can probably. So, that information I won't have until the end of August, first part of September.
So, if that doesn't, if those values don't come in at what we had obviously estimated to come up with this revenues to support this budget, if that comes in last, where do we get the, where do we make the money up from?
You would have to take it out of county reserves to meet this zero.
And with the, with the amount of money that you're taking out of county reserves to support this budget right now, what will that leave? The estimated reserves at the end of 2014?
Right now, they're estimated with this budget as it sits at 20.2.
For the end of 2014?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Well, Mr. Chair, I would just like to make a comment on the $182,500. We do have a lot of building needs and building upgrades, remodels, roofs, those sorts of things that are coming up in the next several years. And I, rather than take the $182,500 out of reserves for accumulated building, I would rather take that particular amount from County General. And then we would have a little more money going into reserves that would build a little bit more, am I right?
Yes.
And I know it seems like $182,500 isn't very much, but it can be a lot towards a roof on some of our buildings. And I, I mean, we just have a lot of buildings to maintain. So, that would be, I guess I would make that motion that $182,500 would come from County General.
Is that the way you got it figured now, Julie?
No.
But she said she could still keep it at the zero, so.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion in the second.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
And this may not be under the motion that's on the floor, but I think it's still meant for discussion. I don't understand, again, I have to go back to the Fairground levy because we're showing that separately on our tax sheet when we send it out to the public. We're levying special for that bonding deal on the Fairgrounds. How can we continue to tax against the special levy on the Fairgrounds, put that on the tax sheet, mail it out to the public, and use that money for something else?
Because it's all under county consolidated. We account for it in a special revenue fund, which means what we decide to tax and levy and budget for accumulated building and County Fair have to be spent on that. But you can change the amount that you levy any time for either one of those funds.
But that's not letting the public know exactly what we're doing when we're doing it upfront. We're levying to get to the Fairgrounds, spending the money for some other building project.
No, we're still have, we're still budgeting under County Fair and accumulated building.
But still spending for something else that I'm.
No.
No, we're not. All they're doing basically is increasing the levy for the fair. That's it.
No, we're, no, I'm not, my motion does not say that. I'm not, I'm not having anything to do with the fair levy.
You're just moving the 182 from the, that's the way I took it. Not affecting the .005.
I wanted it cleaner than messing from everything. I just, it's cleaner to go that way. We're not doing.
So, it will not, with that motion, as it sits, what figure will change is the 5.64 in County General highlighted in orange and the cash reserve figure under accumulated building on line four will go to zero. And on the page below, your levy will still be 5.206.
And the total money that we receive for County Fair at a levy of .073, that, the funds we receive with that levy will all be spent at the fair.
Have to be spent at the fair.
Any other questions?
The reason they're all three under county consolidated is because everybody in the county pays those three levies to support those three funds. Everything we do in my office, it's a separate fund. We don't use 5.206 on anything because we have to keep them all separate.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, motion carried.
I understand there are some decisions that we need verified. I under, on the subsidy programs, Holly's put together a list of those. And we just want to make sure that you are perfectly aware of what has been requested. The amount on the sheet that looks like this from Holly, where it has a yes, no column, alternates, dollar amounts, what is in the 2014 requested column down to additional requests is in this budget as presented. The additional below for Wavy Live and O'Wahy, Inc., of the 25,100, or 25,000, one point, excuse me, 100, 1,500 and 2,000 are not. If you want them left as the 2014 requested, we need no action. If you want to give additional requests, we would like a motion from the board and we can include those.
So, just to be clear, if we go down to economic development, the, there is an increase of $10,000 from Ellsworth Task Force and an increase of $15,000 in Rapid City Economic Development.
Yes. And that's in the budget as it sits.
I'd like to make a motion to not fund Rapid City Economic Development. And I'm, I guess I'm going to stop right there. They would, they would receive zero.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. And just to clarify, Commissioner Troutman, not fund economic development at all or?
At all. The Rapid City Economic Development, it's a separate line item. Yes.
So, that would be removed. Any discussion on the motion?
That's a total removal of Rapid City Economic Development with this motion?
Well, I think, and I seconded the motion, so I think for the public's understanding, something needs to be said about that. And frankly, the reason I seconded the motion and support the motion is because Pennington County is already contributing hundreds of thousands of dollars.
Millions.
Millions. 2.2 million, is that what it is? 2.2 million in economic development by the TIFs that are put in to play.
Annually.
For Rapid City. And we're doing that annually because the TIFs, and the way they're supposed to work in a way, is the city allows these TIFs so that the developers can get their infrastructure paid for out of the property tax dollars generated from that development. But they not only take Rapid City's property tax, they take the counties and the schools. But then the school gets to increase their amount of tax dollars that they get to compensate for that loss in that area. So, the rest of the taxpayers are picking that up. So, Pennington County is contributing a lot towards economic development already. Rapid City, it's a good deal for Rapid City. They lose their property tax just like Pennington County does. But one of the things that they get is all of the building inspection fees for any new construction out there. They get all of the, the sales tax that are generated from a new development like Cabela's that went in. And so, they're actually seeing an increase in their coffers as a result of these TIFs, where Pennington County is seeing a decrease in our coffers. And you might say, well, you wouldn't have had that money had that development not taken place. Well, I can also tell you that we wouldn't have had some of the expense that goes along with those kinds of developments that generate more people coming into our community and all of those other kinds of things that go along with the services that Pennington County provide. So, that's why I'm supporting this. I think we're already doing a lot. I think that the taxpayers of this county are already doing a lot. And to give another $25,000 on top of that seems like an overkill to me.
Any other comments? Are we ready to vote? If so, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Foes, motion carried.
All right, I'd make a motion to not fund the $25,000 to Ellsworth Task Force.
Is there a second?
I'll second it just so we can discuss.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, further discussion?
All right. I'll say my justification for this. We have Ellsworth Task Force and we provide, we give them $25,000. I'm not sure where they get the rest of their money that they operate with. But the state also has the Ellsworth Authority. And Ellsworth Task Force's mission is supposed to be, as I understand it, and it's kind of cloudy to me, but as best as I can understand it, is to try to, try to make sure that Ellsworth Air Force Base stays a viable base for the military and maintains itself here in our community. The Ellsworth Authority does the same thing. The Ellsworth Authority has state funds supporting it. They have the governor on board on that committee. So, when they need to go to Washington, D.C. and lobby, they can take the governor with them. And Ellsworth, Ellsworth Task Force came in earlier this year to get a supplement to their request so that they could hire lobbyists in Washington, D.C. So, it seems to me like the taxpayers are funding two organizations from the state of South Dakota to go to Washington to try to ensure that Ellsworth Air Force Base stays viable in our, in our community and state. I would, and we're a small state. I'm sure that the people in Washington say, they, the people back in South Dakota probably think that we're crazy with all the money that we spend and I would, I would contend that they are crazy. But it looks like we're as crazy if we're spending money for two organizations that do the same thing, parallel to one another. So, that's why I would, that's why I make the motion to defund Ellsworth Task Force.
Any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Chair. I think the funding for the Ellsworth Task Force and for the Ellsworth Authority are two separate issues. And basically, the Ellsworth Task Force operates inside the fence and the Ellsworth Authority operates outside the fence. And also, the Ellsworth Task Force stays in fine tune with the base itself and with the military itself. And with the outside of the fence program that the authority has, it's basically for housing and things in that order, to keep people out of the flight line, keep building from happening in the wrong place. And as they're doing right now, putting in that new wastewater treatment plant, things out there for the base and for Box Elder. I think it'd be a terrible, terrible mistake right now to defund the Ellsworth Task Force. I couldn't possibly support this issue. When we had the last Ellsworth BRAC deal, where they attempted to take Ellsworth off of the, off the map and get rid of it, would have been $370 million out of the Black Hills Authority or out of the Black Hills economy. And not only that, but it would have been a terrible disgrace to national security. As we saw here a few, a few months ago, Dias Air Force Base was called and asked if they could make a strike on Libya. And Dias said, no, they couldn't do it. They called Ellsworth and there's a picture hanging on the wall with the plane leaving, going to Libya. It left out of here in a blinding snowstorm, an ice storm, flew all the way to Libya, made its strike, hit 100% of the targets, went on to a non-friendly nation, re-armed, refueled, and came back and did the same thing again. And Dias sat down there in a nice sunny, balmy 70 degrees and didn't do a thing. So, that's where the Ellsworth Task Force is coming from. The last time that we had the BRAC, the Ellsworth Task Force went to Washington a couple of times. We also went with the governor to the Pentagon. And I can guarantee you, if it hadn't been for Pat McElhern and some of the others on that Ellsworth Task Force, Ellsworth couldn't be there today. Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Holly, did, didn't we want, I thought we had requested a budget and there isn't one in here for Ellsworth Task Force, so we still don't know.
I didn't think we asked for one from the Ellsworth. The only one that I particularly asked for.
I thought we were curious as to how they spent their money. I was thinking.
The only, the only one I specifically asked for was Black Hills Workshop and we didn't get that one.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I don't think anybody on this board will deny the value of Ellsworth Air Force Base to Pennington County, that's a given. I'm just not sure what our $25,000 does. It may pay for one trip to Washington, D.C. and I'm not sure how much good that does. I'm afraid I'm going to have to support the motion.
Yes. I would just like to respond somewhat to Commissioner Davis's comments about how great the military is out there and the great job that they do and the B1's ability to fly out of Ellsworth and help protect the United States as well as other countries. That's not what this is about. I support Ellsworth, I think they're a great base. I just think that we're spending $25,000 and not getting much out of it, if anything.
Further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I can guarantee you what you got out of the last go around with Ellsworth and that's what we put into it back then when the BRAC Commission made that move to close the base. And I think it was a well-funded idea and a smart thing to do to put the money into the Ellsworth Task Force. There's lots of other funds coming into Ellsworth Task Force other than just this, but this is just something to, to help out in that move to keep Ellsworth there. I think it'd be a giant mistake to do this.
Commissioner Troutman.
So, if we did not fund that, but BRAC came out, what would be the position of everyone?
Well, I was going to make that same comment. I guess that there isn't a BRAC going on right at the moment. If there gets to be one, maybe we can take another look at doing something. But right at the moment, there isn't one. And with this administration in Washington, he might close them all, the way it's going. So, it's hard to tell. Mr. Chair. Mr. Holly, next.
I would say that if there was a, a new BRAC came out, what we should do is get a hold of the Ellsworth Authority, sit down with those people, find out what they're doing to try to work on that very issue because that's what their concern is too, to make sure that Ellsworth Air Force Base stays viable if there is ever another BRAC coming into play. And if, and if the governor and the people on that Ellsworth Authority come out and say, we need some additional funds, I would, I would vote to give them some money. But I just think it's crazy to duplicate services. And it feels to me like that's what we're doing with the Ellsworth Task Force and Ellsworth Authority.
Mr. Davis.
Well, again, the Ellsworth Authority is outside of the fence program to make sure that building and things like that do not happen in the flight path of the air, of the airbase. And that's where they, that's what they're, were originally designed to do and that's what they're doing now. The Ellsworth Task Force is strictly an inside of the fence program to keep that base there, to keep in tune with the military. But again, I can't stress enough that I think this would be a terrible, terrible mistake not to fund them. And we surely don't want to be reactive, we want to be proactive when it comes to a BRAC. And yes, there's not a BRAC going on right now. But there's talk about it, whether it's going to happen or not, I don't. Whether it's going to happen or not, I don't know, and I don't think anybody else does. But you can bet that down the road, not too far, something's going to take place. And I agree with Commissioner Busker that with this administration, it's hard to tell what's going to happen next.
Mr. Chairman, one of the things that I know that I asked when he was here, I need to understand how they spend that money, and we don't have any idea. And we are being asked to increase it $15,000. That's over double. And it's really not appropriate for me to not understand how that money is going to be spent, and what they have historically, how they've handled their budgets. And so for me, it's real important that I get that information, and this is a provisionary budget. We can change this, but I would like to see that information.
Just to clarify your comment, the budget request is not double?
It goes from 10 to 25. Oh, I'm looking at the wrong one. Forgive me. From 15 to 25, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just-
I was one line down, sorry.
Didn't want you misquoted.
Thank you. I was one line off.
Okay. Any other discussion on this issue?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I would make a substitute motion that we authorize the $25,000 for the Ellsworth Task Force.
Is there a second?
I'm not going to.
Is there a second? The absence of a second, the substitute motion is not official, so we go back to the original motion and second. Any further discussion?
I could, I am going to vote for this motion. However, if I've got proof that it's spent well, then I could reconsider before the final budget.
Okay. With that, I'll call for the vote. You want a roll call vote? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
One nay vote. Okay, next item.
You want to do Black Hills Vision?
Any other motions on this category?
You know, Mr. Chair, I have the same problem with Black Hills Vision. I have no idea what they do with their money. The letter is very generic about how the money is spent, and I really had thought we were going to get better information this year from folks, and we didn't. So for me, until we know how they're spending their money, this is our taxpayer money we're giving to these folks, and we don't know how they're spending it, they're not giving us budgets, I'm going to make this motion that we not fund Black Hills Vision.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to delete Black Hills Vision funding. Any further discussion? You're in, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Any others?
Mr. Chair, are we just talking about those specific items, or are we talking about everything that's on the sheet?
I think it's fair game, anything on the sheet. We pretty well covered economic development, so is there any other item that you wish to change on this particular sheet?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to discuss a public advocate contract. To some extent, that, my thoughts on that have changed because of communication with the Public Defender's Department. I'm almost thinking if this isn't enough. I mean, let's be realistic, but it looks like we're going to be doing more cases to public, onto the public advocate contract, and so how does that affect this $204,500? I mean, to me, that, we, it's hard to make that decision at this point until we have the discussion with the public defender.
I agree.
Okay. Thanks.
So-
So could we not act on that just yet, until we get to that item, and then we can figure out?
The board can make any changes it wants between now and when you approve final budget, which is slated for September 26th, I think, that week after convention.
Okay. Yeah, because I just think that could be something that's pretty important to figure out. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I have a question for Holly. I know when Black Hills Works was here and wanted $25,000, they were asked to provide their financials. Did we ever get their financials?
I don't believe that I did. I made copies of the one that were received in the mail, but I don't believe that I received anything officially.
Okay, I'd make a motion to not fund Black Hills Works for $25,000.
Second. Motion in a second to eliminate the $25,000 request from Black Hills Works. Any discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Anything else on this page?
Um, yeah. Go ahead.
Well, additional requests, I guess, we've had those requests from, I think, Live Inc. and Oahu Inc. before, and they deal with Pennington County residents that are in these programs outside of the county somewhere, and we're not sure what they do. I'll make a motion to not fund Live Inc. and Oahu Inc.
Second. Motion in a second to not fund Live and Oahu Inc., two separate organizations. Any further discussion? Not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
And I would like, I'm going to make a motion, just so we can discuss it, to not fund Wavy.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I'll wait for your, I'll wait for your call in a second.
Second, we have no second. Motion dies for lack of a second. Any further motions?
We want to talk about it.
Oh, no, I want to talk about it.
And that was your chance.
I am. Mr. Chair, I think we should fund Wavy. I don't like funding these outside sources, but I think Wavy does a tremendous amount of good for the county, saves us a lot of money in the end by housing the ladies and the kids and things that are having problems. And I know we do that several different organizations in the county. But my suggestion would be, my suggestion would be that we fund Wavy and share that equally between the State's Attorney's Office and the Sheriff's Office.
Do we have a motion in that respect?
Just to correct, we do fund them, to the $244,000-plus dollars every year.
About $45,000 a year.
From?
Marriage license fees and divorce filing fees through the courts.
And that is by statute?
No, we would not have to fund them.
We don't have to fund Wavy specifically. It was when the law was started, the board makes the decision where that funding's going to go, and at that time, that board said Wavy, which I don't think was called Wavy back then. You do have to spend it on domestic abuse programs.
So in terms of the requests that's on here, under additional requests, do we need to take some action to dispose of it one way or another? And Holly's saying yes, so?
Mr. Chair, I have a question in relationship to that, and then I might make a motion. Where is it funded, or where do you have it in the budget right now?
DAP.
It's not in the budget right now?
Oh, excuse me, the $25,000 is nowhere in the budget.
Okay. I would make a motion to fund the $25,000 and place it under the State's Attorney's Office for budgeting purposes, place it under the State's Attorney's Office Victim Witness Budget. And the reason, and I don't know if I can give it, I guess until I get a second on that, I can't discuss it.
I'll second it, and then you go.
Okay, we have a motion in a second.
Thank you. My logic behind it is, the $25,000 that this is going to support, supports the effort that Wavy provides to the State's Attorney, and I would agree also with the sheriff and other law enforcement as they're investigating domestic violence cases. So I see that different than a lot of the other social service organizations that are providing good service for the citizens, but I believe this one is a direct investigative assistance in prosecuting those domestic violence-type cases and assault-type cases involving family members. So that's my logic in frankly requesting to fund it, as well as placing it under the State's Attorney's Budget. I did talk with both the State's Attorney and the sheriff to see about where to place that budget, and after the discussion, it really seemed like having it under the State's Attorney was probably the most logical. That way, and if we do it, if this motion passes, then each year, we can have the State's Attorney come up and justify why we need to continue to fund that. He can, he can come in and say, "Here's what this, here's what these people are doing to assist my office in the prosecution of these cases," and be able to justify that, rather than just having them come in and say, "We want $25,000."
Any other comments?
Where's the money going to come from?
It would, State's Attorney's Office is under County General, so it would be an increase to the bottom-line County General, which you, all of these changes to date have been made.
So that'll offset what we've already taken away.
Yeah. You've reduced the budget more than this increase at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I thought that, my philosophy about that was, is that we should split that equally between the Sheriff's Office and the State's Attorney's Office for funding for next year. I don't think that's a problem at all in the amount of money that those two agencies have, and with the return every year. And then the following years after that, they, the sheriff and the State's Attorney can take care of putting a budget together for Wavy, and tell us whether they want to continue to fund it or not.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, Kevin Tone, Pennington County Sheriff, I guess I haven't looked to see if the State's Attorney's here, but we did have a discussion with Commissioner Holloway about the funding for Wavy, and he did ask if we could take it out of individual budgets. And frankly, I feel like we brought you very responsible budgets this year. We went below the budget guidelines you set. You know, we come in very frugal, if you will, on our budget requests, and now to come at this point and ask us to take additional money out of the budget. I mean, obviously, if that's what the commission decides, we'll make it work, but our preference is to fund it as a separate line item in the Victim Witness Program, and then justify it each year, rather than trying to take half out of the Sheriff's Office, half out of the State's Attorney's Office. And I do support the request for Wavy. They are a very critical organization to what we do in the community, and like I said in the previous budget meeting, they're unique. They actually have staff embedded with us, our staff, in the Public Safety Building. That's unique from any other group we work with, and because of the services they provide. And it's not just domestic violence, it's women and children that are victims of sexual and physical abuse. So it covers a wide gambit of victims. So I would ask that you keep the $25,000 separate in the Victim Witness Program and not take it $12,500 out of each, so thank you.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, yes. And I still, I think that this year, that we could fund that out of those two separate agencies without much of a problem. And the following year, they can put that in as a special line item and make a request for special budget. But I don't remember just how much money that the sheriff and the State's Attorney's Office turned back in this last year. Can somebody tell me that? Julie, I don't know if you heard me, heard me or not when you were back there, but can you tell me what the Sheriff's Office and the State's Attorney's Office returned to the county for this last budget?
Oh, geez, off the top of my head.
Yeah.
You have the reports in your book.
Yeah, we do.
We have a lot of reports.
You have a lot of reports.
Right there.
And it's been reported to you, but no, I don't know. I know the sheriff used a lot of its underspent budgets/overcollected revenues to support the bus reserve, as well as some of the tower money, wasn't it, I believe, for the towers for 911?
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
You know, I would just, I would just be cautious about, given the impression to these department heads that if they turn money back, then next year, we're going to, we're going to expect them to take more out of their budgets. We should deal with each budget year, when we go through the budget hearing process, to make sure that they're submitting responsible budgets. But if we start looking at them and saying, "Geez, you turned back $100,000, so now we're going to take $100,000 out of your next year's budget," that's what the federal government does. That's why the federal government buys all of this stupid stuff in the last quarter of their budget year, because their department heads know, if we don't spend it, then we're going to lose it next year. And I just hope that we don't start down that path with county budgets, because I think our department heads have been responsible. They put together what they think is a realistic budget, it gets approved, and then if things change through the year, and they can, they can turn some money back, they turn it back. And it's been a considerable amount every year, spread out throughout the whole county.
Mr. Chair, I guess the thing that I particularly like about Don's motion is that we are taking that money, and it's not like giving it to the task force or anything. We're actually taking control of that request from an outside source, because it is something to do with county business, and we're putting it under an appropriate monitor with the victim's assistance. And from now on, we will be able to know what's done with that money. And I think that's a responsible way to handle it, and so I'll support his motion.
How are they going to do that? Are they going to turn bills into the State's Attorney? My guess is he's going to write him one check for $25,000.
Yep.
That's what's going to happen, so.
I guess I'm not so clear.
But I think, I think what the State's Attorney will be able to tell us at the end of the year is, how many cases did these people work on? What kind of services did they provide for us during that, during that year of working on these types of investigations and trials?
I hope so.
If they don't, then we shouldn't fund them after that.
Yeah, I agree.
If they can't tell us that, then we shouldn't be funding them.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
I'll be at the flogged post at 3:00 this afternoon. And I'll have to, I'll have to vote for this, because I think Wavy does a tremendous amount of good for the community and for the county. And I would prefer that it's funded in a different direction, but it looks to me like maybe, obviously, it's not going that way. So you can't win them all.
In terms of the discussion, it sounded to me like we were kind of, kind of getting into the bookkeeping end of this thing a little bit. What is this, if this motion passes, is it a workable thing for you folks?
It is for me. Actually, I think the clarification of what the money should or could be spent on would be directed at the State's Attorney. Who was here? Jay was here. Yeah. Sorry. He's on the phone.
He's smart enough to get out one to get.
He knows what to get, doesn't he? Just kept him.
I don't get a new chair.
Yeah, well.
Services of people. I guess the point is, it's, money historically has been spent to Wavy, so not having those folks in the room, I couldn't give you line item by line item, but to me, that would be, we have a separate valwa budget, Victims Against, or Violence Against Women budget, but that pays attorney grants, that's attorney's fees, that's not a- pays attorney grants, that's attorney's fees, that's not a, a payment to Wavy. So I assume this would be Wavy directed. And isn't that the position of the sheriff's office?
Direct services.
Correct. So I don't know that it really matters if it's under the state's attorney's budget. That's why I was out in the hallway, I was talking with our office administrator, trying to see if there's a particular budget that it would have to go under and I'm not sure that there'd be a problem with it being under, uh, like a direct service line item under state's attorney's budget where you put it. So, um, it might, it'd be for Wavy and under state's attorney's budget, I think that's fine where it's at.
Okay, just to clarify, would you state the motion, please?
Move by Holloway, seconded by Trout, to fund Wavy at 25,000 dollars under the state's attorney, victims' witness budget.
Okay, so, so we're not impacting the sheriff's office at this point. Okay, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, just about 10 seconds. We asked for, uh, financial statements from some organizations and I want folks to know that we got a complete financial statement from Wavy. And they did a good job putting it together, where their money goes, where it comes from. We also asked one from Black Hills Works, Black Hills Workshop, and this is what we got from them. Not one thing in here said anything about any finances. All it does is show pictures of voter directors and what they're gonna do in the job opportunities and that's it. Nothing about finances.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Okay, are we done with that page?
Mr. Chair, I have, and, and I don't know that I want to make a motion, I just, maybe, maybe you or someone can tell me on the conservation districts, Pennington County and East Pennington County, we give them 62,721 dollars. When they were here at our budget presentation, I was really unclear as to what services they provide. I mean, this is coming out of county general, uh, it's not a special levy for those various districts or locations. What, what is, services are they providing for the citizens of Pennington County? Does anybody know?
Is there anyone here who represents those districts? Um, with the indulgence of the commission, I can comment a little bit.
I was hoping you could.
And, um, just to give you an example, um, I don't see Heine here, but right now the east.
Yeah, he is.
Oh, Heine's here.
He was hiding.
You wanna?
Unimaginable that somebody can hide behind me, but.
You wanna comment about that East Pennington situation?
Yeah, I can a little bit. We had both East Pennington and, and Pennington, there's two districts in the county. We had a lot of, with the drought and stuff that went on the last couple of years, we had a lot of erosion issues. Soil blew off the, the fields and filled the ditches and, and I engaged both, uh, Pennington County Conservation District and Eastern because the county can recover our cost to remove that soil from the ditches, clean out the culverts if the Soil Conservation District investigates and passes a resolution, uh, saying that, that yes, this, this landowner didn't use the proper practices and then if the land, and they direct the landowner to clean it up, the landowner doesn't, the county can come in and we can recover our cost. And there's a couple of laws that address that issue that they have to investigate, uh, pass a resolution, make the determination that it's nuisance. I've used it, I think, one other time about seven, eight years ago on another piece of property. It works and, uh, they also provide programs and information and, and solutions to farmers and ranchers that have highly erodible soils on their property, how they can correct them. And I believe they may even be able to tap into some type of grant funds for individual landowners. So I know they function and I know they work and, uh, that's about as.
Who do you get repayment from, you said, when you?
From the landowner.
Have you ever received payment?
No, uh, most, most, most of the time the landowner goes out and corrects it. I've never had to get into the situation where.
You had.
Uh, we've had to actually go out and do it, but if I don't follow the proper steps, the county cannot recover any, any of our expense money. And you do have an item in your packet later on today that addresses a US government land that the law probably doesn't affect anyway, but.
Mr. Chair?
But they do function and they do work, that's all.
I hate to, I hate to bring this up, Heine, because I generally always agree with you what you, what you do for highway. But you just said that, uh, last seven, eight years you've used them twice, I think you said.
Correct.
Okay, what did you get out of those twice that you used them?
Uh, they notified the landowners and we got the landowners to clean up the, the ditches.
All right, but we didn't get any funds back from any of that use?
No, because we never, we never had to spend any money.
So let's just say that we've been, we've been giving these folks 62,000 a year for the last eight years. That's 496,000 dollars that we've spent on the conservation districts and haven't recouped a dime, other than to tell somebody to clean up their mess, which we could've done with 496,000 dollars.
Well, I think they do a lot of other functions, but I'm not an expert on, on their district, so.
Yes, I, I could expand a little bit on, on that. A lot of the, the conservation practices that you see, they provide the, the NRCS, which is the federal side of the situation, they provide technical assistance through the district. But the district is the, that Pennington County helps fund, uh, is the office that houses the federal employees that provide the technical assistance and that's for tree belts, uh, it's for, um, drainages, uh, timber management. Scott, do you wanna go ahead and comment?
Yeah, one time the conservation districts were under lead and past, you know, we, just like you, basically, we used to administrate their budgets. And basically it helps pay for staff assistance and, and housing of those, uh, with the NRCS. And then they, they do the tree plantings, uh, conservation practices with the, with the private landowners. Uh, there is a South Dakota, um, Conservation Commission and, uh, there's grants that come through there that, uh, go through the districts and they can apply for them to help for conservation management practices on the ground. So it's the erosion practices. I know, uh, Pennington County Conservation District just got a pine beetle grant or a, a thinning grant that'll help with the pine beetle practices on private grounds. So that's some of the stuff that they do. Can give you more detail than that, um, exactly where those dollars go, but I know it's, helps for support staff and, uh, and stuff like that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Does, is this similar to what the county extension, uh, office does?
No, county extension office operates four H program.
That's it?
That's it, no.
Just for the board's information, both soil conservations have elected boards. It's the only subsidy, if you will, reimbursement of expenses that we give to an organization that is run also by an elected board. They never appear on the ballot because they don't have competition, but.
So do they get funds from, I, I heard say that they can apply for grants, but do they get funds from any other source?
Not, not the district itself.
Not the districts, did you?
Will they come out to my place and plant trees on my, my property, Mr. Chair? Do you know?
They might. You have to apply for it.
Okay, so my, my two and a quarter acres is.
Are you under 160 acres?
Uh, yeah.
Any further discussion? Are we ready to move on?
Was, was there a motion? Oh, okay.
Okay, where do we go next?
If you're done with that page on what we call our subsidies, um, Holly also had a letter in there directed to the board dated June 28th, um, delineating the amount or the number of part-time or full-time FTEs and that have been granted in the 2014 budget are in the document as of this morning. She has, um, received dollar amounts for each one of those positions. Um, if you want her to go over those, if you just want it as, um, additional information or if you want, we.
This is she?
Yes, and then she has the dollar amounts for each one.
Please. I would like that.
And just a clarification while Holly's getting up there, th- these figures are, are in the budget at this time?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anyone, any specific way that you want a motion on or discuss or?
One, two, three, four, five, and six.
He wants the amounts.
Amounts for treasure, no additional dollars.
I'll make a motion to accept that.
Second.
Sure.
Any further discussion on that one? Not those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried.
Number two is extension. Cost for a quarter person for next year would be 8,627 dollars.
Total or for us?
Total for county. State pays half, county pays half.
So total would be 17,000?
Yes, half coming from state. For county, county cost only is 8627.
I'll make a motion to, to authorize a half-time person in extension.
Is there a second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd make a substitute motion that we do not fund another half or quarter time person or half time person for extension.
Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of a second. Any discussion on the motion? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Two ayes or three ayes and two noes or what did, what did I hear?
Aye. Yes, I'm, yes, is for quarter.
Okay, motion carried.
Third item, public defender. Currently in the budget you have included two attorneys. Um, Eric and I have talked about this and he is requesting one a staff assistant later on in today's agenda, so I instructed him, we might as well do this all in one shot. So the, the amount, the dollar amount for the staff assistant is 51,180. The dollar amount for the two attorneys is 79,668 dollars each.
Each?
Yes.
All three of those. No, the staff assistant.
We're looking at 100 and 160, 200.
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Um, and, and Holly, you may be able to answer this or if not, um, public defender might be able to. The 51,018 for the staff assistants and, and I, and I'm kind of moving ahead because I read your letter that was sent. You have, obviously have money in your 2014 budget for the employee that you're, that you're trying to groom for this position. And the replacement for that employee, uh, the replacement for that employee, if you get this one approved, is going to come in lower than what you're currently paying that particular employee. Do you follow me?
Uh, I'm not sure if I entirely understand Commissioner Holloway, but the, this would be for a, a base level legal secretary to come into the office and the employee that I'd like to move up to an office manager would continue to do their existing duties in, in addition to the office manager thing. So this.
So the 51,000 would fund a legal secretary?
That's correct.
A new position.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
We would need a motion on the staff assistant to get that into the budget for 2014, so Julie can add it in.
And that, cause that's not in the budget currently.
The two attorneys are, but not the staff.
So the motion would apply only to the staff assistants?
Correct.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to authorize the staff assistant at 51,180, is that what it was?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and I don't know if we need to confirm the other two attorneys or not. I mean.
You can include it in your motion.
I'll include the other two attorneys, uh, in the motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. Chair, just explain my motion then, if I can.
Yes.
Um, the reason that I'm supporting this is we have a new public defender and we brought this gentleman on to, um, help us, uh, straighten out what we perceived as being some issues in the public defender's office. I think he's done a, a good job in the short period of time that he's been here. Uh, one of the things, uh, that has happened, obviously, is that he's identified some problems and some issues in that office. And, um, we knew that there was problems and issues there, that's why we, uh, went out searching for a new public defender. He's only been with us a short period of time. So I, I think we need to give him the tools to do the job that we hired him to do. Now, having said that, I also believe that if he doesn't do the job we hired him to do, then we should get rid of him. He hasn't been here long enough to make that determination. My, my expectation is that he's gonna continue to do a good job for us, but he can't do a good job if we don't give him the tools that he needs to run that office. And so, uh, that's why I'm, I'm supporting this, or I made the motion, I should say.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
There is one, and I'd just like to ask, um, the new director, uh, is the, is the office manager already in the budget and confirmed or has that another employee on top of what we have here?
That issue is still pending before the commission, it's one of my other line items on the agenda.
And so that's down the road a little ways, but how, how, how much is that office manager going to, going to be?
The amount that I had requested is 5,000 additional dollars approximately to, to, to increase, uh, her responsibilities, so that, I, what would it be is a, a promotion from within, so it would not involve another FTE, but that would be a 5,000 dollar approximately.
Okay, so is that what this staff assistant's all about, to replace that person?
No.
So we're gonna look for another one there to replace that one?
No, this is a, an entirely separate issue. This, um, as I, I think I had mentioned to the commission previously, there was originally, uh, three legal secretaries in the public defender's office when there were six attorneys. We still have three legal secretaries in the public defender's office and we have 12 attorneys. Um, what that means is I have attorneys who are also required to do secretarial duties and which.
Paying them a lot of money.
It, it, and then that means they're not getting done or it's, it's not a very cost-effective method to have attorneys doing secretarial work.
But.
Yes, go ahead.
If, if we approve these, these three new FTEs with the additional 51,000 dollars in your 2014 budget request, you will have all the money you need in salaries to cover everybody, including your new office manager for 2014?
I believe that one of my other motions was to, I'm not sure if I know the answer to that. I believe so. The, but I'm, I'm not 100% certain of that.
Because if it's not, we ought to be dealing with that additional right now for 2014. And I was under the impression that, that it was, but I don't know if.
I, I thought that that was the case, but I, I would defer to, uh, the auditor if you happen to.
I don't know.
We'd have to double check his salaries, what was initially put in the budget.
Okay.
And we can make that 5,000 dollar mold in. If it's not.
Okay.
Okay. Okay.
How long would it take us to figure that out?
Well, it's up to you guys today. That agenda is still on, and that 5,000 may change.
But the 5,000, I thought the 5,000 was for 2013's budget.
No. That would be an annual increase, so the rest of 2013 would be a fraction of that dollar figure.
I see. Okay.
I don't have the detail up here. Could you check the detail?
Do you?
I don't know that I have the detail with me right now either, but the, but I don't believe that we did have that reflected in the 2014 budget, the $5,000 increase.
Plus office.
Since Eric's first day was either the day budgets were due or the day after, and the first thing I said to him is, "Where in the heck is your budget?" And so I did help prepare that. And that budget was prepared originally without myself knowing that they were going to increase any attorney staff or do the reclassification. So if you're asking me from having prepared that in my remembrance, we did not include a reclassification in the 2014 budget.
But you did, if I'm remembering correctly, I think that budget went up about 223,000 or thereabouts.
Yes, we included new attorneys.
Okay. Okay.
So we don't know if we need to add that 5,000 to this 5,100 or 51,000? We just...
No, we would have to go, he would have to go back to his office and check that detail out.
My expectation, though, is that you will. I apologize for that.
Need to add it.
Add, need to add it.
Yes.
Okay, to move forward, what do we need?
We just need a quarter of a million dollars to pay for the three new employees.
The 5,000, it was 5,000 what?
He said just a 5,000 flat for that, and the staff assistant needed to be the new position at 51,180.
So I need to amend that?
The 56,180.
I'd need to amend the motion to say 56,180, which would cover both of them then.
Yes.
That's on the, on the agenda later on, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Just soon handle it then.
I think we need to just deal with this here and then take up the agenda item when it comes up.
Okay, and then we can, you can still, if we approve that later on, you can also plug it into the budget then. Is that correct?
For annual.
Well, we, we would have to... When's that on the agenda? You would have to delay, if you want it in provisional. If you don't pass this motion, then you would have to delay approval of provisional budget till later, or approve provisional with the two included, with the attorneys included to point presented, and make it as a change to annual after you make the motion this afternoon.
All right.
You think we're going to go to this afternoon?
No.
We're going to get this done.
Well, we can go through and deal with these changes and then just not pass on the provisional budget until the last thing on their, I mean, we just postponed until the last thing on our agenda, and we went by his, his item that way, right?
Yes, you can do that.
That's what I'd like to see.
So the motion...
Or you could make the motion to include, to affect the 2014 budget with the dollar amounts needed for the public defender as approved later in the afternoon.
We'll leave the motion as it stands.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? Is that correct? Are we confused?
For 51 or 56?
51.
51, thank you, 180.
Any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair. In this, in this motion, we're going to hire three new employees, correct?
Yep.
And we're going to have to come up with approximately $231,000.
It's already in the provisional budget as it is. So it's been already calculated out.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Not those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item four.
Item four is from Buildings and Grounds. This is four positions that are to be utilized for the last six months of 2014 after the new administration building is moved into. Three, janitor three positions at $16,050 each, one building tech position at $16,850, and the accountant ones total that's currently being paid out of bonds, if I'm correct, will be moved over for the remainder, and that is $23,750.
Annual?
For six months.
For six months.
And these are all included in the provisional as it stands.
Any questions? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve or to authorize the four FTEs for Building and Grounds.
Is there a second?
Well, I'm going to have to second it. We're spending 22 or 30 million dollars on buildings. I guess we better clean them.
Any further comments? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item five.
Fifth item comes from Department of Equalization. This is a request to hire two new appraisers that will be hired mid-year. Wage and insurance totals, 33,000 for both, or 16,500 per appraiser.
Say that again, will you, Holly? Do numbers.
33,000 for both, hired mid-year, or 16,500 per.
And is this going to be in overlap? I know we have some people that are retiring. Is that part of it, is to do some training as we look at some retiring?
I don't have anybody that has given me a date that they plan on retiring anytime soon here. We will have people that will retire in the next few years, but I, this isn't in response to anybody planned retirement.
My memory serves me right then from our budget hearings, the reason you need these additional employees is the amount of parcels of property that we have, and trying to get it so that we do a reappraisal on those properties every, what did you say, seven years? Is that...
I'd like, personal goal is seven to eight years of every property. The, the office just has not kept up with the growth of property and the growth in tax parcels of the county. We just simply need more staff to get over the property we have more often.
And again, I think, I think if we don't, currently this is in our budget, right?
Correct.
Yes.
My thought is if we don't fund these offices at the level they need to do the job that we've hired them to do, then, then we create our own problems. And if we've got a Director of Equalization that's not doing his job and is making unnecessary requests upon us for staffing, then we ought to get rid of that guy and hire somebody that can run the place. But we need to give him the tools to do the job that we've hired him to do. So I'm going to make the motion to approve these two FTEs.
I'll second it.
I think you may...
And I think I did that wrong. I should have made a...
Yes, you did.
I'm sorry.
After hearing Commissioner Holloway's wisdom, is there anyone impressed enough to make a motion?
I'll move to authorize those two FTEs.
Is there a second?
I'll second it. I can do that, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Discussion?
You, you can hire an appraiser for $33,000 a year?
That is the, the starting wage for an inexperienced appraiser. The assumption is, is that's probably likely what we're going to get. There will be some cost with training and education that'll simply be absorbed in the budget.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. You have room enough for, in your office, to house two new appraisers? And about the new building, will that house them also?
There's, there's plans in the new building for, what did we anticipate, 15 years down the road? So there is room in the new building. In our building, no, but we'll make room. We'll, we'll move stuff out of rooms that we are using for something else and make room.
Well, and the target date for moving in is the first part of August into the new admin building, so...
We'll, we'll have them on staff before then.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? If not...
Commissioner Holloway's dissertation before he made his motion, he convinced me, so.
With that assurance, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item six.
Thank you.
Item six. Lastly is to authorize one FTE as the project coordinator within the John T. Vikurovich budget. This total is 76,150. It is all revenue-supported.
The one employee is 76,000?
How is it $1,000?
With retirement work comp insurance, that's all-inclusive. Base wage is 58,000 for a project coordinator.
What is, I got to ask, what is, what's he going to, what's the project coordinator going to do for 58,000?
Within that budget is also to the discretionary fund that we receive from the Vikurovich Foundation. So what we've done is we've actually put two funds together. So the project coordinator would be, that would be the individual. This is the first step for us to be looking at the affordable housing, the affordable housing issue within Rapid City. Hopefully, it will be working with the, another individual that's going to be housed outside of the county, that will be looking for grants, that will be going out there and searching for, funding for what we've identified as SRO, single-room occupancies, and the need for, for housing. This person currently, though, however, we do have the, the New Start Grant, which is 500,000. It's currently, we're providing around 47 to 50 vouchers for individuals for housing. We anticipate with this new grant that we will probably go up to 70 to 75 individuals. This is intensive case management. This is overseeing the financial, overseeing the, the current funding that we receive from the Vikurovich. It's accounting, accountability, statistical information. It's actually would be a current employee that would be actually moving over to this position.
Who's doing it now?
Well, me and a lot of my staff were doing it, just to keep this afloat. It has been a project, the first funding that we received for this was around in 2010. At that time, the Paints County Housing Association was overseeing the financials and actually paying for the vouchers. However, they did not do any oversight of the program. So what we did is we took that program back over. We expanded it. We showed that it was actually making a difference within the community. We wrote MOUs, we wrote policies and procedures. We did the financing, we did the, the financials, the statistical informa, it was basically a lot of work within my office, a number of staff, and we simply cannot continue to do it anymore. We just simply can't. It needs to have a coordinator. Now, it doesn't have to necessarily be in Pennington County. It could be, right now, Behavior Management actually took over for the financial responsibility of, of the New Start Program. So it doesn't necessarily have to be housed in Pennington County. I just feel that we've had an integral part of, of this program, and we actually brought it back to life. We know the ins and outs of it. We can do the case management, we do the coordination, we have the dedication, the loyalty, the accountability, and I feel that we could do a good job with it.
Right, this is being paid for out of the Vikurovich grants?
This would be a new, this is actually a new grant request. So if it would not be funded, we would not do this position. It's all, it's 100% grant-supported.
Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair. What happens if the grant goes away?
The position would go away.
Guaranteed.
Guaranteed.
On the record.
On the record.
In front of the TV camera.
In front of the TV cameras.
And the tape recorder.
On the tape recorder.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve that. Authorize one FTE for the project coordinator for the John T. Vikurovich budget.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hearing none, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What's next? Jump up.
I want the motion to approve the provisional as it sets. Julie, finish that.
With the changes, I have made them all live, which thanks to Holly, she did this all for me. If you will call attention, you have, call attention to the bottom half of the page, where with your changes instituted, you have now netted a decrease of .028 in county general. So what I will do is go up and reduce the amount of cash reserves used to bring that to zero.
It's a contact type thing.
So if we wanted to delay passing this motion for county provisional until later in our meeting, so that we can hear the public defender's presentation, would that require a motion to delay this, or would, would we just move on?
Just to table for right now. We can take it back up later in the meeting. That's a Robert's. But yes, it can be, I don't know how you do it on your record.
Is there anything else we need to do with this budget before passing on it? I would make a motion to table this until later in the meeting.
Motion and a second to table the action on the provisional budget until later in the meeting? Any discussion? Not, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Guess what, Julie, you're next. Items from the auditor, and you're two hours late.
It's been so long since I looked at this, I can't remember where it's at. It's just been a long, since I looked at this, can't remember where it is.
General Fund Budget Supplement, SP 13011, for the Juvenile Alternative Expansion Budget. This is the time for the public hearing that you schedule back on July 2nd, and it is a request from Liz Heidelberger, who is our Pennington County JDAI Coordinator, where she is receiving a couple grants, one for 60,000, or excuse me, three grants, one for 60,000, one for 25,000, with an additional 27,250. Again, both total grant-supported at 82,275.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Yes.
I'd make that motion to, uh, approve the supplement to the twenty-thirteen General Fund Juvenile Alternative Expansion Budget, the amount of eighty-two thousand, two-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars from non-budgeted revenue received in the current year.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is the new package off-sale, package malt beverage, beverage and South Dakota wine license for High Country Guest Ranch. Um, this is the published public hearing. The official application is attached, which lists the fees. Owner's name, Blended Arrow LLC.
I'd make a motion to approve this, um, uh, license.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve the malt beverage license.
And then just for the record, if I may, uh, the sheriff has, yeah, looked at this and indicates there, he sees no reason why the license could not be granted.
Okay, this is for the High Country Guest Ranch. Any discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Next item.
The next is, um, a new retail on-off-sale malt beverage license for Cousins Big Bear. Owner's name, Reynolds and Livingston LLC. It is for on-off-sale malt beverage.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I think we could hurry this up just a little bit and, uh, go to item B, C, and D, and they're all, uh, investigated by the sheriff's office, all given approval by the sheriff's office, and I would make a motion to approve them all in one swoop.
Okay, we already moved and, and approved item B, so would you most be...
That's right, C and D. Yep, I was thinking that.
Motion D, Sick Vicks House of Power. I'm, my name is John Tally. I'm the President of Tally Construction, Jay and Ella Gravel Incorporated, and I have a lien against Sick's Vicks Incorporated, a two-year-old bill if they haven't paid. Uh, we've gone through the court system, tried to collect this. We can't collect it, they won't pay their bills. My understanding, you're supposed to be of good character to have a liquor license, and, uh, if the court, uh, if they ignore the order of the court not to pay their bills, I think this license should be denied until they do pay their bills and come do on it.
Is, um, somebody from the State's Attorney's Office out in the hallway on there?
How much is the bill?
Uh, three hundred dollars. If they can afford a liquor license, they can afford to pay three hundred dollars.
Jay? We have a liquor license application up, uh, in front of the board, and I just made a motion to approve, uh, but this gentleman had a, a question about it, and, um, Sick's Vic, um, liquor license, and apparently there's some kind of a lien was attached against this individual, was taken to court. The court issued an order, as I understand from this gentleman, that, uh, to pay the bill, and he hasn't paid it. Uh, what does that do to a liquor license application? That's kinda quick.
I have an answer for you. I have a big guess off the top of my head if I just threw something out there. Are, are you asking, does that go to the character or something of the... Uh, two years old. That's, that's something I definitely have to do some research on. I couldn't tell you if... The sheriff's tried to collect it. They don't keep any accounts in their business names. They keep moving things around, so they can't find it, uh, can't find the money, and, uh...
Substitute motion to approve, uh, C and continued D, to give the State's Attorney time to come back with an answer on...
Second.
Second.
There is a second to the substitute motion, which we would be to approve item C only.
Yes.
Correct.
All in favor of the substitute motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. What do you want to do with item D?
That was part of Ron's motion to continue with...
I'll make a new motion to continue.
Okay.
Uh, until the next meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second to continue item D until the next meeting.
What does that gotta do?
The renewal. These are late.
Renewed by the first of July, didn't it?
Yeah, these are late. They have not been able to sell liquor or whatever it is, malt beverage.
So he's not gonna be able to sell for two more weeks?
Yep.
Okay, well, that makes that to three hundred dollars.
May, maybe if it's only three hundred dollars that he owes you, we just give you the license.
We might wanna check to make sure they're not selling.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Chief Deputy standing there with a puzzled look on his face like, what do I do now?
Lindell, if I may comment to that, we provide a list to the sheriff's office after the last meeting in June with those licenses that have not renewed, so that, and they actually go out and check for us.
Mr. Chair? Does it require a motion to take a, uh, ten-minute break?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Chair, you were gonna say with...
Second. Have a motion in a second to recess for ten minutes. Item on the agenda is item sixteen, items from the treasure.
I can solve this in a hurry, Mr. Chair.
Good morning.
I authorized her to, uh, hire that temporary employee, temporary overhire.
So that's your motion?
That's your motion.
Second.
You can go ahead and talk about it now.
Does anybody have any questions?
Not me. You did your homework ahead of time.
We have a good letter from you, and... Any questions or comments? Did you have a speech ready?
No, I'm just waiting for questions.
Sometimes you just gotta keep your mouth shut, don't you?
Do not pull your feet out of the jaws of the drink.
We do have a motion in a second, and, uh, in order to move on, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Next item, Building and Grounds.
Good morning. Mike Cool with Buildings and Grounds, construction project manager.
Mike, is the money in the budget?
The money is in the budget, yes.
And there was a planned idea ahead of time?
For the Public Health Building, yes. Yes.
I can't make a motion.
Can I do that this summer?
That's what our, our hope is. We got a lot going on right now, but...
I'd make a motion to authorize Buildings and Grounds to advertise a four bids for a re-roof project of the Public Health Building at seven-twenty-five North La Crosse.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Uh, second item I have is, uh, change order number two. We're to that point, uh, in the project where we, uh, need to, uh, execute another change order. The, the items listed on this change order, uh, apply primarily to the evidence, uh, energy plant building. It is, an increase of thirty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents.
Eighteen cents is what we have.
Eighteen cents, is that what they...
It's on this document, yes.
Yes. Uh, that would raise the overall construction value to twenty-two million, five-hundred thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, two-hundred-and-ninety-seven and eighty-one cents. Seeking authorization.
And, and just as a reminder, the, um, anything with the evidence building is that sixty, forty split with the city?
Do we have a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve the change order number two, and I don't think I need it, but I'll add and get the, uh, chairman's signature.
There's a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item C?
Uh, I have some handouts, if that's all right. What you have here is a little bit different, uh, way than I presented project numbers to you before. I've been look, we've been trying to establish a, uh, a line-item method of keeping track of, uh, I think we have thirteen spreadsheets or something, uh, tracking costs on the project, so, trying to simplify it as much as I can. But typically, uh, most of these, uh, I'll just go with a parking structure as an example. It has a, the overall budget number, and then there's a contingency number down below it. And then if you work your way across, it shows how much we spent or, uh, what the change is in the, uh, in the, uh, original bu- budget amounts. The campus expansion project is, broken down a little bit differently. I've got an administration costs component, then property costs, uh, site work, air- energy plant, and administration building. The property costs and some, and the administration costs, uh, in talking with you before, have been combined in some of those other, um, project, the site work, evidence, and the energy plant, uh, totals before, so this is a little bit different in, in the way that that's presented. The, the project overall continues to proceed well. We're happy with the workmanship and our working relationship with Skull Construction right now. Currently, we are, we've spent approximately, our overall budget on the project is, uh, about twenty-nine-point-six million dollars, and we've spent about sixteen-point-six million dollars at this point in time. And I don't know if there's any questions they could maybe answer for you, uh...
Any questions? This looks like a pretty clear, clear way to illustrate this, Mike. It looks, looks good.
Glad it works. Okay. This is just for informational purposes, so I, I'm not looking for any type of motion.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is number eighteen, Emergency Management.
Still morning?
Oh, yeah.
Good morning. Uh, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager, and this is, uh, getting close to being able to put this pre-disaster mitigation plan, uh, issue to, to bed, at least for the next four years. Uh, this is a five-year document. This is something that I've been working on since the day I stepped into this, uh, or since you appointed me to this position. Uh, this is what we had our, our contractor working on. I can tell you that, that, uh, that we probably won't use a contractor in the future. This is a document that we could generate internally, but, uh, that decision was made before I got in there, so, um, it's been all approved by FEMA. This is the last step in, in getting the, the stamp of approval for FEMA, and this is the, the, basically the adoption of this document as, as our pre-disaster mitigation plan. I've been before all the municipalities in Pennington County that are participating in this, uh, as you can see from that, um, that draft copy that I handed out, and I've got signatures from, from, uh, all of the other municipalities, but the, the one that matters most is the one from this commission. So I wanted to make sure I got all those other ones prior to bringing it before you. Uh, so if you affix your sign, the chairman's signature to this, I will send it on to FEMA, and we will, uh, we will have our approved pre-disaster mitigation plan. And, uh, just as a, as a quick recap, what that does is outline mitigation strategies, uh, in the face of, of disasters that we may face in Pennington County. Uh, and the most important, or maybe not the most important, but an important part of this plan is it serves as, as, uh, a key or access to FEMA mitigation grant dollars. That's a twenty-five, seventy-five percent match, twenty-five by the municipality, seventy-five percent for, by FEMA, for, for large mitigation projects. As an example, one of the ones that, that this plan actually addresses and is waiting on is Box Elder was approved for two public warning sirens to add to our public warning constellation. Those are applied for under mitigation dollars, uh, with this plan contingent on it being signed, and, uh, they were awarded that, so Box Elder will pay the twenty-five percent, FEMA will pay the seventy-five percent. We'll get two more warning sirens in our, in our county warning constellation. So, just an example of what it does. So I'd be asking for the chairman's signature.
You need a motion to the chairman's signature on pre-disaster mitigation plan? That's it.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? I'll just point out, um, that this document bears the signatures of the mayors from Box Elder, Hill City, New Underwood, Wall, and Rapid City, and the president of the Keystone Board of Trustees, as well as the chair's signature. There's any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the second item, chairman's signature on the state and local agreement, the third quarter report.
I already did that.
You already did that? We did them both in one? Oh, okay. Sorry about that. Let me do it again.
Next item is item nineteen. Fire administrator.
Good morning, Dean. Anyway, uh, back on June eighteenth, you approved a, uh, permit for the Black Hills Speedway to have a public works, or public fireworks display. The races on the, uh, on July fifth got rained out, so we've simply come back, uh, and asked for this Friday, the sixteenth, my right, no, nineteenth, I'm sorry, the nineteenth, and then two alternate dates of July twenty-sixth or August second, just in case, the way the weather is, so we don't have to keep coming back in front of you. I've talked with Jay Alderman, and, and we can, alternate dates or other dates are certainly allowed, so, just a, uh...
You got any church certificate?
Yes, I have all the information, uh, excuse me, I do not have a current certificate of, of insurance, but we will have that before Friday. I did talk with the insurance company, uh, down in Nebraska, and they said that's not a problem, and they can put alternate dates on it also, so we can have it covered for all three days, or all three potential days.
Mr. Chair, I make a, a motion to approve the public display of fireworks for Black Hills Speedway on July nineteenth with alternative dates of July twenty-second, or, I mean, sorry, twenty-sixth or August second, provided they meet the requirements.
Second. We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
How about New Year's Eve? You could have it then.
City will take care of that.
Yeah.
Rapid City will have theirs on New Year's Eve.
You could have snowmobile races.
Don't put any more on my shoulders than I already got, but thank you.
Remember one time they had jet ski races out there?
Yep.
Okay, we do have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item is item twenty, Highway Department.
Good morning, Heiny Jungy, Paint County Highway Superintendent. First thing I have is, uh, uh, letting authorization, utility certificate, and right-of-way certificate for an asphalt overlay, slide repair, guard rail, and pavement marking on Deerfield Road. We're basically gonna do a mill and overlay next year from the intersection of Mystic Road, thirteen-point-three-four miles west-northwest to the end of the asphalt. There are no utilities or right-of-way necessary to do this project, but state requires board signature on those certificates, so I ask for a motion for chairperson's signature on the utility certificate letting authorization and... on the utility certificate, letting authorization, and right-of-way certificate for Deerfield Road Project P 6403, print 08.
My motion, Mr. Chair.
Estimated cost, $3,437,000.
Hey, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Next item is blowing soil and land erosion. Shouldn't use this word, but prairie dogs. In the Badlands National Park along Sage Creek Road, on the north end of the park where you enter the park, that first quarter to a half mile is loaded with prairie dogs. The last couple of years with all the drought, there was severe soil erosion. I contacted the Eastern Pennington Conservation District. They went out and looked at it, and they passed a resolution declaring this blowing soil is a nuisance. And I drafted a letter for chairperson's signature that will be sent, along with the resolution, to Eric Bruneman, which is the Badlands National Park Superintendent at this time. We know the federal government does not have to abide by state law, but both the eastern, or East Pennington Conservation District and the Highway Department determined that they were violating erosion standards for both on the state and the national level. I did attend a meeting last Monday night in Wall, and we had representatives from the state of South Dakota, the State Conservation District. The one party that was present asked for a copy of the pictures because she was going to DC to talk about conservation, and she said she was going to make them know at that time that we have a problem with it, and we would like them to correct it, get the dirt back out of the ditches. We went in there last fall and spent about $6,800 cleaning them all out, and then through the winter, we ended up with more drifts. And we had dirt drifts across the road instead of snow drifts a couple of times, but it's not a good situation, and we know the federal government usually won't pay for things like this, so I was advised that I should CC it off to about everybody I could think of, so I'm sending a CC to Sally Jewell. She's the Secretary of the Interior. They have control of the parks. Senator Tim Johnson, Senator John Thune, Representative Kristi Noem, and back to Eastern Pennington Conservation District. So I would like to have a motion, or whatever you need to approve signing this letter, so we can get the process started, and hopefully they'll either contract with us this time and reimburse us, or hire a contractor to restore that portion of roadway back to the same condition it was before. We had all the soil blowing all over. And as you can see by the pictures I attached, it was pretty nasty last summer for a while, and we've had to re-gravel a portion of that three different times because once that soil gets into the gravel and it rains, it turns to mud. So it's been an ongoing battle, and I'm hoping we can get the US government to do something instead of the local taxpayers spending our funds.
I would, Mr. Chair, I would CC the EPA on this also.
Oh, EPA?
Air quality.
Oh.
Along with that side of it.
On the national level?
Yep.
Okay. I will have to redo the letter then. I don't know if Holly has it, that you could add it?
Oh, I don't have it on my chart.
Mr. Chair?
We could send it to you, so you could add that.
Mr. Chair? Yes? Did you bill them for the $6,000 that you spent on it last year?
No. I, it took me about two months to get permission to allow me to remove the dirt from the ditches and put it on their property. They have, they happen to have a stock dam not too far away, and then they were out there, they had a monitor there at all times to make sure we wouldn't dig up an artifact or a piece of bone or something. Their fence line is full, and then they wouldn't, they think the road is under their jurisdiction, and they have control of the right-of-way, and typically over the years, if we pull the shoulders or mow the road, they threaten me that they're gonna find me or have me arrested, or. So it's not, it's a.
The easy solution is to tell them, "Okay, it's yours."
Well, we could, but then they might stop, close it off, and that's the only access from scenic to wall for all them ranchers and farmers that live.
And any other, any other landowner that you would do what you did, cleaning it out? Is my understanding you would have billed those people?
Under state law, we can. If I have a resolution passed, I sent six locations to the East Pennington County Conservation District on different roads in the Wall area. This one, most of the board members were aware of it, and they've seen it, and they're gonna investigate the other five sites, and we may see additional resolutions come in. And under state law, if I get them to pass a resolution, then I can bill back the property owners. I didn't wanna cite that with the federal government because the federal government do not have to honor state law, so I kinda.
So when you cleaned it out last year, you didn't have this resolution?
No, I did not have a resolution. It was just a verbal agreement between the Badlands National Park and the Highway Department.
Okay, and are you sending a copy of this resolution to the Badlands National Park?
Yes, they'll get everything that you have. They'll get the letter from the commissioners, the resolution, the map, and the pictures.
Okay.
And if you wanna add the EPA, I don't have their address or anything, or who the secretary of that department is on the national level.
I'm sure Dan would have it planning his own, since he deals with them in races.
And then I could, as soon as I get back to the office, I'll call him and have you, send you this electronically, and you could add that CC, if that's what you like.
Any other questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the signature of the chairman on the letter regarding blowing soil and land erosion affecting Sage Creek Road.
Second. We have a motion in a second? Any further discussion?
I'm sorry.
Did you wanna add the EPA CC to that motion?
With the addition of the EPA.
EPA, okay.
Secretary, Director, I'm not sure what the.
We'll find that out. Holly will get it put on the letter, so.
Does that meet the approval of the second? It does? Okay. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Okay, items from weed and pests.
Public defender.
Oh, we missed public defender.
What?
Public defender.
Oh, I'm sorry. Jumping ahead here.
Save your money if you did, but.
I've been called to weed in the past before, so. There is, there's gonna be a day when I get to come before you, and I'm gonna get to say that there aren't any problems yet, but that unfortunately is not our date yet. I have several other issues pending before the board this morning. One, and I can't answer Commissioner Holloway's earlier question about whether or not that $5,000 was included into our budget. It is. It's already there. So. The first item on the agenda is to approve the wage classify, the position outside the wage classification. I had originally provided the memo as well as a clarification letter following that. If anyone has any further questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
So have we taken this to Nick, and have you worked through that with him?
We have.
The proper.
Job description and all of those things, yes. Hi, Nick Stroud, Human Resource Director. I, the job description was taken before me, but we haven't worked on anything since this was last brought before the meeting. I don't know if that was your question, or how far back you were going.
Yeah, 'cause we, I think we were kinda interested in seeing how this goes in our overall. I mean, when we reclassify, we review it based on what is happening in the other areas of the county.
We have not done that. And Commissioner Buskood asked for some information. I have that, if you're still interested in it, Ron. What you had asked for was where the current wage is, what the per-the-wage policy would be, and then every step between there and the request. So I have that, if you're still interested in it.
Since I asked for it, I must have wanted it.
Well, and this also goes back to what Dawn had, Dawn, you had questioned what steps were between the wage policy and the proposed step. And so, yeah, there's, sorry, I can give you one, too. And this is all in our wage handout. It's just kind of there for you guys to look at, so.
So countywide, we're, we're, we're still, we still haven't had this discussion of how it fits.
The job description that I had drafted was for an office manager within the public defender's office. This requires somebody to have experience with legal secretary work. Part of their responsibilities are to work under the director and assistant director, and to manage attorneys on their daily file closing billing, time sheets, et cetera. It's called an office manager, I guess that that could be used in other offices. However, the job description that I asked for is somebody that frankly would, I can't imagine that it's too portable to a whole lot of other offices, but. Go ahead, sir. I would say where we're at is, the job description's been approved. We're just trying to find where to put the person that Eric's wanting to put in. If we hired someone off of the street, they would either go A through D, which isn't on this sheet I just gave you. A would be zero experience. D would be the most experience we could ask for without coming to the board. The person that he has in mind, I think, is very capable, and as per our wage policy, they need to go to 18I, from 16LB to 18I. That's per-the-wage policy. So really, the only thing we need to talk about from this point forward is where, if we don't put them at 18I, where they need to go on the wage scale, because that has to come from a motion from the board. And KJ's a little better than this at it than I am, but she's not here today. But that's, I think that's the only issue in front of you today.
And, and, when, if we take Eric's recommendation and put the person at 18L, is it 18L?
LB, the last one on there, yeah.
Can I just clarify something? Next year, we're doing away with the Bs, right, Julie?
Yes.
So the 18LB will now become 18M.
No.
Well, it won't go back to 18L.
No, whoever, you go ahead, Julie.
What happens in the way we phased out the B step is that in 2014, if you get a merit, you go to the next full step. And you cannot place anybody in 2014 on the B step. So eventually, the B step will be all gone, we're hoping, within two years, which means somebody hasn't gotten a merit. It's only a 1% merit at this time, but everybody realized it.
Eventually, the 18LB will be 18M.
Once they deserve the merit, but it's not a forced change.
Yeah, and I think that was important to both Julie and I during the budgeting process, is that it wasn't an automatic.
Can, can you tell us how many times we have done a promotion, such as being proposed here, and went outside of the wage policy as it relates to where you place somebody on, on the scale?
Since I've been here less than five, we're very, very cautious about this, because.
And how far up the steps in those five that we have made exceptions? How far up the ladder did we go?
I could get that information for you, but I don't have that information.
I mean, I think Eric makes a good argument that, giving the person the additional responsibility and only attaching what it would be about $20, $23 cents an hour difference, if they followed the county's policy.
Correct.
Isn't very realistic. It's not very realistic at all.
You want to ask for a person for $0.23 an hour, whatever it is.
It'd be $0.62.
Is that what it is? Difference between?
Well, I have 17, 26, 17 to 26, 40.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought he was going to.
That's what the policy would put them there. So, I mean, I think there is some real exception that needs to be made, because it.
And KJ will tell you that this is not, I mean, that's the purpose of bringing this to you. There's an automatic step people can take if they don't wanna make this and do what Eric's doing today. There's an automatic one, but if you feel that the person is more deserving of more, then this is where we're at.
You know, I'm just concerned how far we're, I wanna support this, but I'm concerned how far we're going, because it impacts what we've done with other people. And if we've held other people to a area, then, then we ought to try to be consistent. And I don't know if there's, if there's other ones that we've made promotions that are, that are taking on the similar additional responsibilities as Eric has outlined with this job description. But, you know, I know in years past, it was whoever happened to come before the board and could talk to Swedish got the best deal for their employees, and everybody else got the. Is that how you did it? Is that how you did it?
He had sugar dripping all over him.
But that's not the fair way to do it. I mean, what I've always thought the board should try to do is be, have some consistency in what we're doing. I'd like to know, in those other exceptions that we've made, especially in the last few years, how that compares to what we're looking at doing this time.
And I'm just, off the top of my head, in the last two years, I don't even know if we've done one. We redid, if you guys remember, we redid the Policy 220, which was our reclassification policy, and we allowed department heads to go A through D for a non-supervisory position, or A through H in a supervisory position. And what we, the thinking was, is we put more of that back on the department head. But that's just for new hires. So this is something, we're taking an existing employee, and we're promoting them from, and they're a long-term employee and have been very good at what they've done for a long time, so they're pretty far on the scale, so it's, but I don't know if we've done one outside of the wage policy in the past two years. I'd be happy to look.
For me, I mean, I think we do need to do something different than what is normal, but I think that was what I thought was gonna happen if you guys got together, is to kinda discuss how that relates throughout the county and what might be possible. So that, I'd like to see that discussion take place. So. I think for me, that's important.
So where are we?
It's only money. Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I think that one thing that bothers me, and, or two things, two that would jump in that far, but maybe this person is qualified to receive that much money for their services. But the thing that really bothers me is this office manager position. So once we made this precedence of an office manager position, we could make this for every department in Pennington County. So when we do that, we're gonna have about 18 more employees being office managers with $5,000 a piece increase in wages. Then we're gonna have to hire somebody to fill that position that those office managers just left, because now they're management staff, and now we gotta have a worker to go underneath them. So now we're not only that, we have 18 or 19 office managers, we got 18 or 19 more new employees. I hope that's not the case with this thing, but this looks to me like that's what. not the case with this thing, but this, this looks to me like that's what's going to happen. It bothers me.
And I don't, that wouldn't be Eric's issue, obviously, because, but that would be something that I'd have to deal with. And, and I see where your line of thinking is, is that, and that's what I always caution. When people come in to me and say, this is what I'd want to do, you know, how does it, and that's what Nancy referred to, how does this impact the county as a whole? And what kind of precedent are we setting? And so that, that's some discussion that we.
And as weird as it sounds, maybe, because I know coming in, sometimes you think, why do they operate that way? But, you know, we, we have a state's attorney who has a similar position that we're considering administrative assistant three. Maybe, maybe it's a silly thing like changing the name. Seriously, but, but it keeps us together.
My understanding is that we picked this because that's what the wage was for that similar employee. I may be wrong about that, but I thought that's what the level we did so that there would be parity between organizations countywide.
The 18.
Yes, the 18.
But, but can we see what, I mean, the state's attorney's got an office manager at an 18. Sheriff's got somebody he calls an administrative assistant three at, at an 18, and they've been with the county for so long. Where are they at on the scales?
They have that information, but I'm sorry I didn't provide it.
Because if, if we've had somebody working in the state's attorney's office for five years doing this job, that's going to be similar to what you're going to have your person do, and they're making less than $5,000 a month, then it doesn't seem fair that we would bump that person that high.
That's why we really need that, that conversation.
Understood.
I mean, I think, I think no doubt, we need to, you need to give them more than 23 cents an hour, you know, but, but I'm just not sure how far to go with it, because I don't know what inequities it does throughout the rest of the county. And that's what I'd like to see you two get together and look at and say, what, who else do we have working in the county doing a similar type job in a different office? Where are they at on the scale? What's their length of time in that job? What's fair then? What's?
Very good. We can do that. Absolutely.
Isn't that where you were going?
That's exactly where I was at.
Sorry, I didn't understand that last time.
Okay. Sometimes I don't say it right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Julie, we're going to have to, we're going to have to do something with the budget today as soon as we're done with this item. If we postpone this for two weeks, what are we going to have to do with the budget today? Make that motion to pass a budget? And can we amend that budget between now and the time we have to finalize it?
Yes, you approve, you need to approve a provisional budget by the end of July, which is why it's on the agenda. So you have to approve something today or set a special meeting to do it before the end of the month. The board then has its first initial, first official annual budget hearing on the first Tuesday of September and the rest of September to make any more changes that you want. You also have the ability by motion to make changes after provisional to affect the annual. And then we again restate them at that first annual hearing. So you can approve it today. As, as Eric, I believe, has told you, the reclass and the attorneys are in there. You added the additional legal. So provisional budget, I have figures for that as it sits right now. And you can continue this item, rediscover it, and at that time, when you approve it, whatever you approve, in comparison to the 5,000, I believe is the figure you're using, is that for half a year?
That would be for the full.
For the full year. You can also add to that motion that this affects his budget by this much in a reduction. And then it'll go into the annual.
So I think that for Nancy and Dawn, we're headed to postpone this to the next meeting to get that information?
Well, I think we'll go ahead and approve the provisional. We have to.
Well, we have to.
But, well, we can deal with it in a motion later.
Very good. As for the next topics, the, the first thing, and I wrote my memo to you to, to outline these, but the, the first thing is the notice of intent to temporarily cease new case appointments. After I arrived here, I began looking at the, the case numbers, how many cases we were had in our office. And it took me a while to sort out through the IT department to know exactly how many cases each attorney had, what type of cases, because some cases obviously take more work than others. For example, a misdemeanor case is, is less complex than, say, a homicide case. That's an easy example. So a homicide case, you, you, you give it a higher weight than, say, a misdemeanor. So what I, what I've long used in my prior position is a weighted system that allows me to know from day to day how many cases and what weight of those cases each attorney is carrying. Typically, once you hit about 200, that's a red line. It's dangerous territory to cross as, as an attorney. You start to miss things. You lack the sufficient time to, to do all of your due diligence and the requirements that the professional, rules of professional responsibility require us to do. As I, as a snapshot on July 11th of where my, I, we have 12, 12 attorneys in the office, and eight of them were at those respective numbers. The ones who were below is myself, as I'm not taking a full caseload yet. Also, the, we have a young lady who's studying for the bar. We had just had a new hire. She's just not full yet. And one who was right at the red line, who's, has a homicide trial coming up in a, in a week or so. So that's where we are. These are levels that create massive concern for me as, from my professional responsibilities, because each and every case that comes into my office, I am ultimately responsible that that case be handled in an appropriate and professional manner. It's, I, I would like to, and I felt it was important that I come before the commission to advise them of both the problems and, and what the solutions are. The solutions are, we, we need more attorneys in the public defender's office. That's the solution. My initial assessment, based upon numbers of what we did in 2012, we had 4,700 cases that we handled in, in the year 2012. My initial assessment that I provided to the advisory board that 17 attorneys would be required to handle that caseload. This year, we've had an eight and a half percent increase over the first six months. So, but I think that that 17 number is still relatively fair. It made, but we're not going to, what I'm trying to tell you is we're not going to be able to take each and every case the rest of the balance of the year. Even if we have two additional attorneys, it's still not enough. What, and unfortunately, I lack the space to, to even have 17 attorneys if you would approve them. So I can't even ask for them. What, what I, what I can ask for is, based upon the fact that we were so short-staffed for really the first half of this year, we're going to have extra money in our 2013 budget in the salary line item. And I've, we've sharpened our pencils, and I believe with a provisional supplementary amount of $19,350, that would allow me to hire two additional attorneys and get them on staff as quickly as we possibly can. And I've, you know, I figured it was August 1st. And that way, we can begin to mitigate the problem. The, the unfortunate circumstance of when I need to move to withdraw to, is the, those cases will then be assigned to panel attorneys, private attorney, private counsel, and they'll bill you at $84 an hour as they're required to do. And typically, each of those cases are on a, if, if it's a fair average between misdemeanors and felonies, they're going to come back at about $1,000 a, a bill. We, I think last week, we, we were assigned 125 cases or something like that. So you can see that the numbers are going to be rather high. And I wish that I was, I had better news for you.
Numbers are going to be staggering. We're talking half a million dollars.
Yeah.
We could hire 10 attorneys for a year.
Yes.
We'd have to find an office for them, but.
Yeah.
Wow. I don't know.
If, if I may, Commissioner, to, once we stop for just a couple, three weeks, I'm going to, I can monitor this hour by hour, and which is really a change as hour by hour as cases are assigned and as they come in. I'm going to take as many cases as we possibly can. I'm going to ask our attorneys to bear with the situation and to continue to work extremely hard. But we, we have to get down to more appropriate levels to protect ourselves as well as the county and their rights.
Okay, before we go any further, we do need to take an action to dispose of item A.
Item A.
I'd make a motion to postpone that item for two weeks till the next county commission meeting to allow them to get the information together requested.
One second.
We have a motion in a second to postpone item A for two weeks. Any further discussion on that motion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Now we'll continue with item B. Any, any further discussion? Item B is for, you wanted to hire the two attorneys here the 1st of August, Eric? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and is that inclusive then? Are you going to talk about that next? The staff, for a staff person?
Yes, I'd be happy to, or.
You want to cover them? I, I don't know, Mr. Chair, do we want to do them separately or, because it's all under B, I guess, or under, yeah?
The, the staff attorney, or the staff person is what I've requested, and we've had the motion to supplement my 2014 budget to hire the additional staff person, because we are, again, substantially and desperately short-staffed for staff people. And there, there's a lot of stress in the office of, some of the things that I'm requiring them to do now are, is above and beyond what was required before, even though they're highly appropriate tasks to be done. And we're, we're basically stopped. We can't continue to make improvements until we have more people to.
And this is a legal secretary.
This will be a legal secretary. That's right.
So if we should have to approve the two attorneys and not approve this one, we're just adding, I mean, you've already indicated.
That's right.
So they're kind of connected together?
Yes.
And you think it'd take a $16,000 supplement for this one, and for the two attorneys, $19,000 in, in.
That's correct. We, we, we calculated that based upon if they needed a full family and all that, those.
It would seem to me like we could, we could make a motion to authorize you to go ahead and hire these people early, but, but wait until December or whenever, later in the year, to see what you actually have left in your budget to come in for a supplement. So it would seem to me like we could probably take care of that with the authorization, but not with the funding at this time. Because we could, as a board, then we could look at our contingency fund or to, to take care of that, as we do a lot of other supplements. Okay, just, just to make sure we're clear, based on what we did earlier, is requesting approval of a staff assistant position later in the board of commissioners' agenda to be brought on in 2013. And if approved, funding needed to be added to the 2014 budget, which has not been included in its provisional figures. Is that where we are?
No.
You did that. You did.
Yeah, we, we did that.
The funding for the positions are in the 2014 budget as of right now.
So is this a totally different person, or what do we?
No. What he's asking for, if I may.
Absolutely.
Is, rather than hiring them January 1, he wants to expedite that hiring for those three, three FTEs as of August 1. Is one issue. And then the other issue is the budget shortfall for 2013.
Because of those hires.
Because of those early, expediting that. You can make it in one motion. You can make it in one motion. Just, just a little bit of background for Eric. When Commissioner Holloway is talking about seeing how much you can absorb and requesting the difference at the year-end, it's, it's a standard procedure in Pennington.
Very good.
And we send you a note, a memo out to all the department heads that says, tell us where you're short.
Okay. Very good.
Mr. Chair. Maybe I'm way out in left, left, left field someplace on this whole thing, but I'm just sitting here wondering that maybe we shouldn't do what Mr. Buschard, and the previous county commissioner tried to do, and that's hire outside people to do public defender's workforce. We could go out and, for the amount of money that we're spending here, we could go out and contract with 10 attorneys for $300,000, and we wouldn't have 10 attorneys on, on staff. We wouldn't have the medical to pay for. We wouldn't have the retirement to pay for, and we'd have 10 new attorneys to do public defender work.
Part of the problem with that is we'd have to okay it with the judges, because they're the ones that do the appointing. And if we hire eight of them, they might not appoint any of them. We've got a real problem.
Well, that's, that's conversation we can do with the judges without much problem.
Maybe we need to, as, as Commissioner Troutman suggested before, maybe we need to get our, our public advocate to see if they can put a couple more attorneys on for a while and take some additional cases.
Well, we, if you look at what the 2013 approved budget for the public advocate is, it's $196,000. And I'm not sure what we've spent so far. I haven't gotten that far to look that up. But, but it is, that was originally my concern is we were talking about increasing 2014 to 204,500. And that might not be enough. Until we get this worked around, I, you know, I guess I'm not so much in favor of going outside of the county to do public defender. I, I think that, that Eric needs to have the opportunity to, to fix it, and I think he is. And I think we need to work with him to help with that. Although I, I am a little nervous about the amount of, of money that we might be spending. I was just, it looks like it could be quite a bit of money in just three weeks for, if, if we put out those, those 100 files a week, you know, that, that gets pretty expensive really fast, and it already goes over what we have for budget just in three weeks' time, without taking into account what we've done already. So that in itself is a concern for me, but, but I also think you need to hire people to, to do.
I appreciate all of these concerns. And I can say, Commissioner Davis, lots of counties have faced the same, the same issue. What has been historical is that a public defender's office is the most cost-effective way to, to handle this situation. Typically, we're going to be able, about on a cost-per-case basis, be somewhere between $300 and $400. Usually, a public advocacy is, is going to be a little bit higher than that. And then if you go out into a private, private situation, it's, it's quite a bit higher. So we have economies of scale in which we're close to the courthouse. We can run up. We have 10 files to handle instead of one hearing. And that's how, through economies of scale, we can deliver the services historically from counties all across the country, including this one, in the most cost-effective way to do it. People will say that they can take a contract on and do it for some amount. It breaks down in a month. Doesn't work. You, you, they have certain professional responsibilities that they, that, that they can't abdicate just because they say, I, I'll do something for a contract. And it doesn't usually work.
Judge Davis.
Just before you go too far down the road on, on going outside, we have historically tried that in Pennington County a couple of different times in the past, and for the reasons that Mr. Witcher has just indicated, it hasn't worked. I mean, without naming names, and it was nothing necessarily with the particular attorneys that became involved and contracted, but by the time you work out conflict situations and work through who can represent who, it turned out to be way more expensive, and it's the reason that the contracts were canceled. And that was when the public advocacy came on board, and we've tried to work through that process. I think it's important for the board to understand that this is not a new issue in the public defender's office. It's an issue that's been down there for a long, long time. I have spoke to you several different times at, at budget hearings that the public defenders need more attorneys. What you've got now is someone that's come in and actively managing the office, so these things have bubbled to the surface. It's unfortunate that it couldn't have come along progressively as the county's needs grew and as caseloads grew, and there were more cases out there. It didn't. And, and now this is where we're at. I'll give Eric credit for coming to, to our side of the fence as he's worked through this proposal. I'm also a little leery to not have the public defender's office, except I'm also a little leery to not have the public defender's office, except cases here for a period of time, and, and to appoint outside, because it's going to be terribly expensive. I've worked with the judges. We try to go through the request for court-appointed counsel as closely as we can. If somebody's going to fudge on one of those things, they're going to fudge, and unless you have lots of investigative time through law enforcement, or other staff people to go get that investigation done, some people are going to slide through. Eric's staff is making an extra effort to, to work through those applications, and make certain that the people who are appointed counsel truly qualify for it. So everybody's kind of pulling together on this to make it work, but we're in the uncharted territory. The figures that he's put together and given you, I watch his staff in court on a daily basis, they're unragged. Something's got to change. But I, I don't know that Commissioner Davis, that an outside contract, at this point, from having the benefit of, of trying that in the past years, it proved to be more expensive.
Any other comments?
Yeah, I guess, then why over the, all of the years that we had the public advocacy, advocacy group, so why don't we just get rid of them entirely, and hire more public defenders, and then we got them all right in one location?
Because you'd still have the conflict situation. Take, take a drug case with, with three defendants. The public defender's office can only represent one.
I know where you're going, but I want the public to know, so-
So then the next fallback is the public advocate, which most often can take care of a conflict within a given case, co-defendants. When it doesn't, then you've got to strike out, and, and go to private counsel, or set up one more situation similar to the public advocate, without going outside on individual contracts, and, and look at it that way. It's also a possibility, but I don't think until we get far enough down the road, with adequate staffing in the public defender's office, we're going to know what those numbers are. I certainly think it's something that can be considered.
Okay, any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the public defender to hire two lawyers and a legal secretary as of August 1, and that we would look at his budget needs because of that action at the end of the year, and do a transfer then.
Second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? If not, those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Now, Mr. Chair, I, I, can we address that? I, I'm, I am still a little concerned, Eric, about the cost of going outside on, on those files. I, I, I mean, I, that's a lot of money. To me, if we do that in three weeks, that, that many files, we are well over the budget that we have this year, and we should have an idea of how we're going to pay for that as a commission. So I kind of like that discussion.
In, in reviewing the contract from the public advocacy, I, to me, they look about full for their office, unfortunately, I'm not sure how many of those cases can, can go to their office.
Okay, so we would be going out-
Yes, and, and-
We still have to pay for it, whether we go to advocacy, or, or whatever. We're still going to have to pay for it. How are we going to do that? That's my concern.
Judge?
If I may, just as a possible solution-
Okay.
It, it would be unfair not to say that, that the circuit court budget for court-appointed counsel every year, as you all know, has some left in it, usually, because you don't know the number of A&amp;N cases or court-appointed counsel. Last year, it was fairly substantial, and that would go towards offsetting some of those, some of those issues.
Okay, because we're talking several hundred thousand dollars.
But it would mean, it would mean spending the entire, I think we're budgeted at about $550,000 in the two categories, and it would mean spending all of that. I mean, it would be spending that budget this year, where in the past, there's been from 70 to 125 left over.
But that, I mean-
It's-
We're several hundred thousand, that'll help, but we still have a big gap to figure out where we're coming up with that money.
That's exactly right.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Are we going to discuss that, or?
Well, I, I don't think there's anything for us, I mean, it's going to be what it's going to be, and it'll have to come out of contingency, or out of our reserves, if we don't have it covered in the court-appointed attorneys' fees, or if, if the public advocate office, they, they, we pay them on a annual basis, so they could take as many cases as they can take, whatever that might be, and we don't have a choice with the other ones. I mean, I think with the motion that we passed to give Eric two more attorneys, hopefully they'll, they'll be able to start disposing of some of these cases a little quicker. I think that's part of his goal, is to get on top of some of that in a management way, so that they're not the backlog of cases. But I, I think he has some concerns with his-
And I get that.
Legally, you know, of representing people. We have that same, should have that same concern for our liability, and so I don't, it's going to be what it's going to be, and we just have to deal with it later on.
And, and I agree that we need to do it, but I just want you very aware, as a very new person, that the money's got to come from somewhere, and you've got to keep track of what we're doing.
I completely understand those concerns. We're going to take every measure that I can to try to mitigate this as much as possible. We're going to continue to take A&amp;N cases, which oftentimes, they last several months, and they become quite expensive in court-appointed attorney fees. We're at a critical stage right now, that's going to end in two or three weeks. After that, we're going to take as many cases as we possibly can. We will take the cases that I, in my judgment, are going to be the most expensive cases, and so that, that we absorb those costs, as opposed to the county and private counsel, and, and we're going to do everything that I can, and we'll get these people on as quickly as possible, and then we'll have them filled up in no time.
Can we, Julie, can we have them notify you when all this starts, so we can keep track of what this is really costing us?
That's just what I was going to explain, Commissioner, as I sat back there and listened to this, I understand your concern and share it. We're going to continue to put the request for court-appointed counsel through the public defender's office, so they can, and from there, they'll ship them upstairs, and, and we'll do outside assignments, but that way we can track how many there would have been that went out, and what the cost is, because we'll have a name with the voucher, so that we'll know the actual cost of this three-week layoff, or however it comes together. So, I think we've put together a pretty good plan to be able to trace dollars and understand costs, which would then help in the future, Commissioner Davis, as the office comes up to speed, and, and more staff attorneys to know if we need another public advocate-type situation, add another person to their office, whatever it might be. Simply adding to their office, if one person in their office has a conflict, then the office has a conflict, so that isn't always the solution either.
It, it would really be good if, as, as we progress down this path, you could give us updates, and to say, here's where we're at as of today.
Great.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
I can certainly do so.
Okay, one more comment, and then we'll move on.
I just want, I just wanted to say, do you have room enough in your current location to handle two new attorneys, and a, and an office manager, and a, and a staff person? I mean, they're down there sitting on each other's laps now.
We're going to get real cozy. Yeah, we, we do, it's not easy, but there's, you know, we're going to, we have a supply closet, that we're going to have a lawyer in it, and that's where we're at, but-
Good place for a couple of them.
No desk.
Okay, let's move on to Weeden Pest.
Excuse me, is this when you were going to finalize the budget motion?
Well, we, we've got, uh, let's see, executive session after Weeden Pest, and planning and zoning, we could certainly take that action now, if the board is interested in doing so.
Do we have to take, make a motion to take it off the table, then?
Yep.
Can anyone make that motion? Mr. Chair, I'd move to take the approval of the provisional budget off the table from earlier in the meeting.
Moved and seconded to lift the provisional budget from the table. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried.
Holly's turning it back on for me. The changes that you approved today, which included the FTEs, the additions, the change of reserve, the reduction, meant that, it's coming up here, that we could net take, we added the 182,500 to county general, removed it from accumulated building, with your changes, even with your additions, we only had to take out, that added back in $188,000 to reserves, so the reserve figure is now at 5.642, so it's very similar to where it was before we started this morning, because of the change, and you can see on the second page that the levy for county general is, is zero, whereas accumulated building is up. We can now make additional changes to county general, to not only have it at zero, but bring the county consolidated levy down to zero. Is that the board's direction? I wanted you to see it before I made that change, but that's the way I understood it, you wanted it to see it as a 0% back to the 520.
And then I just change our reserve?
Down a little bit, yes. So with that direction, if you go back up, Holly, thank you, you can approve the budget at that 83,465,856, with balancing to zero levies increases, and taking the net out of cash reserves, which will be probably a little over 8 million then, by the time we make that adjustment. Does that make sense?
So, you correct me if I'm wrong on this motion, Julie, but I moved to approve the provisional budget with, of 83,465,000-
85,000.
Yeah, okay.
With frozen levies, and that's really all.
With frozen levies.
There a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Here in those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried. Thank you, Julie. Scott, you're on. Items from Weeden Pest.
Good afternoon, Scott Guffey, Pennington County Weeden Pest Director. It's just an informative item, it's our Pennington County Mountain Pine Beetle Suppression Project final report. We just got done cutting trees here a couple weeks ago on the right-of-way, all those trees went to the mill, so, got all their numbers, and I won't go into detail over it unless you want me to, but I just wanted to point out a couple of things. I failed to mention on our 200-foot right-of-way, in our timber sale agreement, the contract logger was allowed to go outside and get those additional trees. If you go to where we talked about the 200-foot right-of-way in your, in the report, and have the breakdown of the survey, and then the resurvey table, those, the number of pine beetle on the first chart, the 3,872, were also cut, so that wasn't, that wasn't in my final number of trees, total trees cut. So total with that, and with the dead trees, we cut a total of 28,000, about 28,000 trees, and about 7,000 of those trees went to mills, or got utilized, so about 25%. We'd like to increase that, instead of, you know, cutting those big, yellow-burden-infested trees, it's much better to utilize them, and take them to the mill, or do something with them, than cut and chunk them, and leave them on the floor's floor. And then also, in the summary, I went over the total funding, how much it costs us to do this project. As you can see, county general, or county dollars, was 25,000 out of the 385,000 we spent on the project. Now we're in the process of planning for 2013, 2014, and all that will be state dollars, the state grant that we got, the 670,000, so we should be, my target is to do about 40,000 trees. Hopefully, we can take a number of those, or utilize them, taking them to the mills, or doing something with them, instead of cutting and chunking.
I just have a suggestion, and maybe, I don't, maybe you've done it. I think, your last paragraph says, it was, project was possible with coordination and cooperation in Black Hills National Forest, South Dakota Department of Agriculture, South Dakota Game and Fish and Parks, South Dakota Department of Transportation, Black Hills Power and Light, Black Hills Electric Cooperative, Neiman Timber Company, and Deadwood Biofuels, some contracted tree cutters. Maybe we should send some of those a copy of this, and, and a thank-you note from us from Pennington County, saying, here's what, here's what you, you got out of it.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's a great idea.
I emailed a lot of the entities, but I'll follow up and make sure everybody got contacted.
Any other comments?
One of the things that I, I really am proud of Scott for doing, is, is working with the Forest Service to do those small timber sales, so that we could get those trees off the property when they're felled, rather than just cutting and chunking them. It's creating a better issue for the Forest, Forest Service, but it also creates a better situation, if there is a fire, and the firefighters are going in there, they're not trying to get over those chunks to get in to fight fires, and, and that's a kind of unique way, and Scott's, I, I don't know, as far as I know, this kind of cooperation is the first in the country, and that's a, we've done a lot of things, thanks to Scott, that have been very unique. He's thinking outside the box, and, and he's very well-respected with, with all of the partners that we've been working with, and I'm really proud of you, thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Nancy. And to follow up on that, you know, we've, I've been in privilege to sit in some meetings with the timber companies down at the SO's office of the Forest Service, and, you know, we're going to try to, you know, increase those small, direct sales to landowners, you know, if they got X amount of pine beetle-infested trees on their land, and then if we're doing a buffer, we can do a direct sale, and they can go across that Forest Service fence and get some of those trees while they're taking those, too, so it's another avenue we're looking at.
Well, we're lucky we've got a timber industry to work with, too.
Absolutely.
That's the other thing, so, it's great.
Any other comments? No, thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Thanks for your good work.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to go into executive session for contractual in 10 minutes.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post, motion carried.
Entertain a motion to come out of executive session, please.
So moved.
Is there a second? All those in favor of coming out of executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Dan?
Good afternoon, Dan Jensen, Pennington County Planning Director. Board of Commissioners uses the consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine planning and zoning items quickly. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and a vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. The consent agenda for planning and zoning contains the following items. Item A is a second reading of rezoning request 1302, Jarvis and Francis Olson, Fisk Land Serving as the agent. Approval is recommended. Item B is a planned unit development review 0903, Simpson, Inc., James and Marla Simpson, and approval is recommended. Item C is a planned unit development amendment review 0804 for Linda Kramer, and approval is recommended. Item D is a layout plat 1311 for Holy Smoke, Inc., Danielle Banks, and approval is recommended. Item E, first reading and public hearing of rezoning request 1311, and comprehensive plan amendment 1305, Holy Smoke, Inc., Danielle Banks, and approval is recommended. Item F is a preliminary plat 1312, and subdivision regulation variance 1305, William or Lark Bennett and Renner and Associates, Associates, agent, and approval is recommended. Item G is a first reading and a public hearing of rezone request 13-12, and comprehensive plan amendment 1306, for William and Lark Bennett, Renner Associates, and approval is
Are there any items under the consent agenda that would- Are there any items under the consent agenda that would like to be pulled either by the Board of Commissioners or the public?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda for planning and zoning as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll say one.
Been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda of planning and zoning. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So, you will move on to item H. Item H is a, is this Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan approval of participant agreement, SPC 2012 PC 77.
Good afternoon. Brittany Molitor, Water Protection Coordinator. I'm presenting this item. The advisory group had recommended funding of this item, SPC 2012 PC 77, on March 27th of 2013. The Board of Commissioners did sustain the recommendation on May 21st. However, the board did continue the approval of the participant agreement and sent it back to Respec to see if the cost could be reduced. Um, Respec did reevaluate the project and made an alternative recommendation. Uh, the 319 cost share portion associated with SPC 2012 PC 77 for the alternative recommendation is $24,219. Justin Krasky with Respec is here to discuss that alternative recommendation.
Is, um, okay.
Justin Krasky with Respec Consulting. I can answer any of your questions that you might have regarding that. Uh, we did revise it. Mr. Lowery did, uh, meet with me and after that, I provided a revised cost estimate for that project. Uh, the main reason for that is that instead of riprap being installed on a lot of the footage that was originally estimated, uh, in my cost estimate, we've moved to more stream bank bioengineering-type projects or practices, including less rock, which is, and more trees or root wads and willow clump planting. So, that is probably the biggest, uh, change within that cost estimate on that contract.
At this time, I would, um, hand the meeting back over to the chair, and we are on, um, item H, reviewing the participant agreement for the Spring Creek Watershed Management Project.
Okay, so, is there further discussion on item H?
Just for clarification, again, these are the, um, estimates based upon, um, the, um, formula that you use for, per foot of the creek. It's not the actual, the actual price hasn't been determined yet.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Holloway, that is correct. This is an engineering estimate. However, we feel it's good enough that Mr. Lowery will have to abide within that, not to exceed him out. Otherwise, it's on his cost.
So, Mr. Chair, I'd move to approve the chairperson's signature, signature on the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan Cost Share Participant Agreement, SPC 2012 PC 77 for $24,219.
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Who's directing traffic out there?
Hello again. My name is Julie Mueller, and I would like to express my concern for the funding of this project. It's my opinion that our tax dollars were not meant to be spent this way. A few of us citizens, by, by a few of us, I think, coming here and questioning it, it helped, um, all of us communicate a little bit more. And Commissioner Holloway had asked for, um, specifics on the $42,897 on the May 21st meeting, and we were told by one of the Respec, um, Justin, that it, the taxpayers were not allowed to know how the money was being spent or what it was being spent on. And we thank Commissioner Holloway for questioning it. And I believe he also said at that time, if any other county office had asked for this kind of money with no oversight or no accountability on how our tax dollars were being spent, it wouldn't be approved. And I think by us questioning that, it did make them go back to the drawing board, and now we've cut it down by almost $19,000 on one property alone, which is really good. But it also leads me to wonder if we wouldn't have questioned it, how, how much more money on each one of these projects are we gonna be spending that we don't need to be spent? Um, also, I am wondering, um, how adding riprap or stabilizing, stabilizing the, um, stream bank is, is going to directly affect what I think this project is about, is you're trying to stop the E. coli or the fecal coliform in the water. Um, I have been up to the site, the two different sites a few different times, and there's so much, um, heavy grass over those edges. I don't see where the, the sides are eroding, and I don't see where any, um, waste from the wildlife up there isn't being broken down before it even gets in the water. And the water's cold, so the fecal coliform really can't live in cold. Um, I, I, again, I, I do not think that our private, our tax dollars go to a private property. I didn't know if any of you had the opportunity to check to see if this is something they have to claim on their taxes as a gift with the IRS. I, how was that handled in 2010 when some, some money was given for this? Um, so, I guess I'd like that clarified. I also know that, um, Commissioner Davis and Commissioner Peterson have been to the property. So, I'm wondering if you guys could, you know, be, when I sit down, if you guys could let us know if the other three of you have been up to these properties to look at them, because it is our tax dollars. So, I'm just wondering if you, if you've been up there. Also, if, um, Dan and Brittany, being as they're representing the county in our tax dollars, if they've been up there to look at the, the property. I think that's important to know. Um, as we've talked before, I believe there's a, this country's in debt. And I think we need to pick and choose as a community what projects that we need to spend tax dollars on. And you hear about things on the news all the time about, I think the last thing was this virtual, virtual cow thing. And some people came forward, and then they found out it wasn't being spent on a virtual cow. It was being spent on four other virtual, you know, projects, which was a huge waste of our tax dollars. And again, I'm asking you guys if you could consider being the leaders. And it, to me, this, when I've been up there, it's nine inches deep, maybe, this water. And we've spent over $650,000 on the studies so far. Um, earlier, you guys were wondering how to come up with money to fund lawyers. And I guess I don't understand how, just when nature has been taking care of the creeks and everything for all these years, just because money became available through the EPA, which, I guess I'm not gonna comment on the EPA, but it doesn't make it right that we should all keep furthering some of these agendas that they have. Uh, we will always have clean drinking water. That's been brought up before. The, and nobody is swimming in Spring Creek at nine inches deep. Uh, and that's, I swear, I mean, maybe a foot deep. But to spend this kind of money with this kind of economy that we have is just, to me, it's just, it's gotta stop. The other thing is, is I'd like to remind you again that, um, Justin from Respec had said that this was confidential, and we taxpayers could not know how this money was being spent. And that was questioned by Commissioner Holloway. Um, again, I would ask you to not approve any of this funding unless we all know how, how it's being spent. And, um, also, the packet that came out was just like three business days ago. So, there are, we have some legislators working with us, um, current and past legislators. And we would all like a chance to study that information for, uh, for a little bit before you rule on this. So, if you could give us some more time so we can look into it ourself. And I know that Sandy Bishar is here to talk to you about, um, us, you know, citizens, volunteer citizens, doing water testing to save the county some money. And if those things could be considered, I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Any further comments?
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'm George Farabee, and I've got a couple of comments. And first, if I may, maybe somebody can help me with, for lack of a better word, I'm stymied. Stymied by two issues. One is, this picture on this page, I don't know, you folks probably don't have it, but you folks up there have it. They're 600 feet. Is that a farm or agricultural operation? In my definition, it's not. And, and I'm trying to look, get the feedback from any of the five of you. Is that 600 feet a farm or agricultural operation? It's nothing what I grew up on, but it looked like anything. And I grew up around 70-some years ago. I'm stymied because back in May, thanks to Commissioner Holloway, we had a chance to bring it to, the issue to a head, the confidentiality issue to a head. You know, it's NRCS that was the stumbling block. They're strictly farm and agricultural operations. This packet says that Lowery's signed authorization for release of information. They checked the blocks. Says, please initial the boxes for the conditions. You will allow NRCS to share information about your agricultural operation. What am I missing? Is this 600 feet a creek? Is this agricultural operation? To me, it's just plain simple. NRCS certainly, if there is a problem, can probably offer their technical advice. Let me back up to May 21st. After Commissioner Holloway very appropriately pressed the issue of confidentiality, a couple of days later, I went over to NRCS and asked the young fellow that's heading up the Rapid City or the Pennington County Office, "Do you have," I asked him specifically, "to see the signed agreements?" If you folks recall, on May 21st, individual stood right here and said, "We have signed agreements with NRCS." Quote-unquote. So, I asked to see those agreements. Didn't have any. Didn't have any agreements. So, either my hearing is no good or somebody probably prevaricated. I asked the young fellow in NRCS to put that in writing, and he declined. So, I called his big boss in Huron, State Conservationist for the federal government for NRCS. And I do have a letter saying that there are no signed agreements. So, why are we confusing? My point is, why are we confusing this landscaping project, for lack of a better word, with a farm and agricultural operation? Will, will any of you help me with that issue? NRCS certainly can provide technical advice, but why hide behind confidentiality? The second issue that I'm stymied by is, when this project started in 2009, resulting of a 2008 document signed by Scott Kenner, Ph.D., not signed, but issued by him, it was to reduce fecal coliform. The 600 feet was part of that project area. Now, I, I guess maybe here again, I'm missing something. What are rocks and, and, uh, root wads, whatever they are, and, and willows? And by the way, the one side of that property, willows are as thick as I've ever seen any place in the hills. But we're gonna plant those things. The vegetative cover, except for a few spots where the banks have washed, and that's, this creek bank, this creek bank would be a premier spot on the Spring Creek I grew up next to 250 years ago, 250 miles up north of here, 60 years ago. This, the Spring Creek, this would look like a premier spot on it. Super spot. Anyway, what has this got to do with E. coli? The TMDL that Scott Kenner, Ph.D., issued or sent to EPA talked about E. Coli, excuse me, fecal coliform. Now, I've asked and asked and asked people, what connection is there between rocks and fecal coliform as a source? Maybe you can My last point, and I guess I'm not stymied by this one. This is just plain ridiculous. If we take the entirety of Spring Creek, unless this is an isolated spot on Spring Creek, and I mentioned this two months ago, and it's a really, really rough numbers, approximate numbers. But if we take every 600 feet of Spring Creek and all its tributaries, roughly 100 miles, 5,000, 528,000, uh, feet, we're looking at a 10 to 12 to 15 to 20 billion-dollar project to do this kind of work. Folks, we're doing nothing more than landscaping a wealthy Sioux Falls individuals' place on Spring Creek. He lives in Sioux Falls. His Sioux Falls house is appraised at 400, just short of half a million dollars. This place is appraised at 242, I've, I've, thousands, I recall. So, what are we doing? As Julie mentioned, why don't you give us time? This document was signed by the Lowery's Thursday. Uh, give us time to look at and come back with, with arguments. If, if what we presented today isn't sufficient for you to deny this project, then give us time to come back with arguments. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Any other comments?
I just have one. At the fear of being ostracized, I'm gonna have to agree with George. I think it's a landscaping project.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. There's no further comments. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. One day vote. Item A.
Item A is the Spring.
Maybe this is not quite the place for it, but I'd like clarification of this. And maybe, Justin, you can help me. This stream is a, is an navigatable water source. Am I correct?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, in order to determine that, it would have to, you would have to ask the Army Corps Engineers for a specific request regarding that on a particular property. In state law, Spring Creek is not part of the designated rivers within, for the state of South Dakota regarding fencing laws, everything like that. Regarding riparian areas and streams, it still is, from what I can gather, and certainly I've talked to Jay about this, my opinion is it's still public or private up in Spring Creek, the bed and the banks. The water is public. But I am not an attorney, and if you need a legal.
That's where I was.
Opinion on that.
The water is public to the high-water mark.
Correct.
Correct.
That's my.
So, if they've had, if they've had a flood in there like they did in '72 and others, then they picked the high-water mark up back away from the banks. Okay? So, if that's the case, then this is, this land is basically owned, could be even owned down through the creek. But yet, the federal government and the state government control the water and access to the high-water mark.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, they certainly regulate it as such.
So, then whose responsibility is it if the individual owns it and he's taxed for it, but he can't use it because the high-water mark is somewhere in this mix? So, whose responsibility is it then to stabilize the banks and, um, put the riparian work to work in and to make grass and, as Mr. Farabee said, willows and things on that order?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, certainly, I don't have an opinion to that policy as such. There are individuals and participants within the project. There are individuals and participants within the project area that view it as their, you know, duty to, you know, work on the creek as part of their, you know, public benefit downstream. And certainly, I can, it's probably a case here with Mr. Lowry. There are benefits downstream that certainly are there.
We're going to move forward with item I. Now, this discussion is not part of, part of the activity today, so we'll proceed with item I.
Item, excuse me, item I is the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan Amendment to the Spring Creek Monitoring Plan Not to Exceed Amount. On May 7th, 2013, the Board of Commissioners made the motion to adopt the 2013 Spring Creek Geo-Bean Monitoring Plan on at least 16 sites, from May 8th to September 30th, not to exceed 74,000 pursuant to staff recommendation. Attached is a memo from Respec suggesting an addendum to the water quality monitoring plan to include replicate or split samples to another laboratory and additional monitoring locations. The additional costs can be funded by 319 funds pending approval from DNR. Funds can be transferred within the current tasks, so it's within the normal budget of the project. Basically, we're asking just for the authority to, if we need to add monitoring locations, to do that, because right now with the current motion that stands, we can't exceed that 74,000. Even if we can move money within the budget in the monitoring, the way the monitoring, the motion was made, we can't do that right now. And with the current advisories, we would like to be able to have that option to add additional sites and to do some split samples with some other contract laboratories.
What would be the purpose of doing split samples?
Verifying.
Verifying results.
Just making sure that the results that have been...
Basically, it's not, it's showing that the lab that's currently doing it is, their method is, you know, when you have two separate people, it kind of shows a robustness, is what they call it in the, in the method. It basically confirms the results of the labs, essentially.
So we don't trust the one, we're having them do it?
No, we do. It's just a matter of, it was a recommendation by DNR, and it's just another level of QAQC in the project.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it was one of the recommendations in discussion with DNR. On a normal type of monitoring plan, the normal quality assurance, quality control is 10% replicate samples, means take another bottle right after we took one. Typically, it's five minutes later. The other thing is, is any type of blanks and duplicates, also 10%. Regarding the advisory, after that determination was made, I did recommend to Brittany consultation with DNR, and it is part of their standard operating procedure to split 10% of their samples. I included a lot more in my recommendation. Certainly, that's up to Brittany and Commissioners to decide how much you want to split, but I do think it is a good idea. Nobody's perfect. Certainly, labs aren't perfect. And you have two good labs, certified labs here in Rapid City, and I recommend you to utilize in both those sources.
But isn't the focus supposed to be because we have that advisory out on a certain length of Spring Creek that we want to do, to make sure that those readings are correct? Isn't that a large part of the purpose of this duplication?
It is, and to add monitoring locations. Some of the response that I've gotten, and maybe Dustin can speak to that too, because he's received a lot, is, you know, people want to know where it's coming from and what we're going to do about it. So we wanted to be able to have that ability within our budget that if we had to add monitoring sites and things, that we could do that.
Any other questions or comments?
So do I understand that what you're going to do is have this same sample tested at two separate places?
We take two samples at the same time, and one goes to one lab and one goes to another lab.
I think that's crazy. I think it's a waste of money.
I mean, that certainly, if, I mean, we could do, you know, one a month or something like that, just to verify, but I think the more important is the adding sites and trying to do some additional monitoring.
Yeah, but there, there we responded and...
Come up, state your name.
I'm Sandra Beshear from West Dakota Water Board, and we are starting a monitor program at this time. This would be a program that would be doing the same things, except throughout the hills, so that we can get a clear picture of all of our creek's water quality in this area. So we will be going through and doing the samplings. We are going to do this, and we will give you the results free of charge. Okay?
Mr. Chair, wait, just a minute, please. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
You said free of charge. If that's free of charge, why do you have a taxing authority and you take a tax off of my tax bill every year, and where does that money go?
Well, we are, we are combining with East Dakota Water Board and Water Watch to do this program.
But you're still using my tax dollars to take those samples and paying for them with that money?
These will be volunteers that will be taking the samples.
But you're paying for them to be being tested in where?
No, sir. The cost of this is, is going to be virtually nothing to us, too.
And who's doing the testing?
This will be done by, who is covering the cost right now will be Dakota Watch, and they have a certain amount of funds to use for this purposes.
But that comes from our tax dollars, correct?
Where Dakota Watch gets its tax dollars from, I believe is someplace in the state, but not from, just from Pendleton County.
So none of, none of the money comes out of your funding?
No. If we exceed the amount of test samples that they get, they will give us a $5 charge per sample. And we, West Dakota has allocated a certain amount of funds in case we go over the sampling amounts.
But again, I have to say, but it's coming from our tax dollars as a bill levy on my tax bill.
It doesn't matter.
Someplace in the state, yeah.
I tell you what, I'm so close, right here, to just make a motion, to give all this damn money back and just forget the whole project, and when the EPA walks in here and tells us, "Okay, we know that there's a problem on this creek or that creek," then the county pays the bills, and that's just about where I'm at right about now.
Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I would much rather see a random sampling of, you know, of two samples every so often to do some checking. I don't know if we need to do every one of them, and I think we should be more than happy to take the results of your sampling and test, check them against what ours say.
That's fine. I was, I'm here to inform you what West Dakota is doing. So that's all I was here today to do, to let you know that we are also water, doing water samples. The state set up West Dakota Water Board years ago to monitor the water. They were afraid that the coal slurries that were going to be piped through this area was going to contaminate our aquifers, so they set up West Dakota to watch over our water safety.
Great. We would appreciate it, I think.
Thank you.
Okay.
We have a press release from East Dakota, who is sponsoring the Dakota Water Watch, a guy named Jay Gilbertson, who is the administrator for East Dakota, full-time employee. He came out and briefed us here a couple of months ago, and Sandy and others were there. And their press release says their training session is going to be in Hill City on the 24th, and then the next day in Rapid City at the outdoor campus. He tells me that there's a portable test unit for bacteria, and I ask him point-blank, "How accurate is that portable test unit?" And he says that the correlation studies they've done so far with the real labs, you know, the permanent labs, has been really close. So, okay, so what's this going to cost us, other than some volunteer time to go take samples? Have to have somebody to store this unit, you know, to keep it out of the weather, obviously. And the material, the medium they use to put in the sample is like a buck 70 something or other, and he said they try to do three of those at once, so $5 per sample, and that comes out of Dakota Water Watch, which is budgeted through East Dakota. That's an impetus or incentive to get us going. Now, Jay Gilbertson is the head, by the way, is the new chairman of the 319 Nonpoint Source Task Force for the state of South Dakota. Okay? And I'll volunteer a little bit of time to do some samples. Hopefully, we can find somebody in Hill City to store this portable unit after we're trained on how to use it. And once again, he says the correlation is close enough, I don't want to use a word with government work, but he said it's close. Now, while I'm up here, the variances are so phenomenal. The gal, and I'm sure you've heard me say before, a gal named Linda Harris from DNR has been sampling for years and years and years. The other day, I asked her, I said, "How, how many times you been out to entrance to Sheridan Lake, twice this year, for E. coli?" She's every, every month. But for E. coli, and see, this is the other silly thing, E. coli is only tested five months out of the year. The creek is sampled every month by DNR, but E. coli is only a concern, so if you get water splashed on you in October, you're fishing. Golly, anyway. May 29th, she said her results, and I haven't seen these in writing, this is over the phone, 33, and now it's not CFU, it's per 100 milliliter, it's MPNs, that's most probable number, 33 MPNs per 100 milliliters, that was on May 29th. June 18th, 2,419.
Let's do it.
That's tremendous, tremendous increase. Well, guess what? Happened the day before, June 18th. Gordon Hill City Monitoring Station precipitated .84 inches. As Sandy says, Dakota Water Watch, hoping to find some volunteers to do some sampling. Next to nothing, $5 a sample. I checked with the labs, I said, "If I bring the samples in, how much will it cost me?" $25 in Rapid City. So for $5, I think that's pretty reasonable. Thank you.
Anyone else? One more time, ma'am, and we're going to proceed.
I was just wondering if you could answer, have, have you three been to the site? And have, you have been to the site?
I have been.
No.
Okay. Thank you for answering, and have, Dan, have you, have either one of you been to the...
I have.
Okay. And you both have?
I have.
Okay. That's all I needed to know. Thank you.
By the way, I voted against it. For your information.
We'll be sure to put that in the Hill City paper.
You know, I would, I would like to comment on that.
Ma'am?
We have a right to express, you know, our feelings on a topic. I'm missing work to come here and do this, and it's important to me. And as far as the Hill City paper goes, I put one story in there, but there was a, what, a 2,000-word, this is 2,000-word rebuttal, and this is, this is absolutely ridiculous. Nobody has bullied anybody. The only thing we have done as citizens is gotten involved, and that's what we're supposed to do, get involved. We saw something, we didn't, we wondered about it, we questioned it, and I, and we should not be treated disrespectfully because we are, we're citizens out there caring and trying to make a difference. If, if anybody has been bullied by certain people, it's one of the people who is supposed to get a lot of money from you guys, who has called me at home personally and called my husband at work personally, bullying us. And all we've done is express our concern for taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
I know, Commissioner, I really apologize for extending this. Just on those last comments, I've said quietly for the last couple of months through this, and specific to bullying and the misrepresentation, my family and my name has been drug through, you know, the Hill City paper. Representations of fraud, representations of criminal activity on this, and, you know, if that isn't irresponsible, I don't know what is. And so I would welcome, you know, just arguing the merits of this project and, and dealing with the issues at hand without making this personal, but it's, they've chosen to take that tack. But I'm here to represent to you that the integrity of our company, the integrity of the individuals have stood tall for 50-some years, and we've been doing business here for a long, long time, but I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay. I've been pretty liberal with the protocol surrounding this meeting during this period of time, but at this point in time, I think everything's been said that needs to be said relative to who questions what. And I guess the one thing that I would say is that if a public entity operating on tax dollars, such as West Dakota, chooses to involve themselves in a mutual, mutual interest project in an adversarial way to this county, then the results are going to be diminished considerably. And if people view themselves as leaders, I would hope that they would recognize that there's some common ground and cooperation and coordination could be affected if indeed they chose to do so. And so at this point in time, I'm going to ask the commission to adopt a motion that from this point forward, in this meeting, there be no more public comment. Would anyone care to make a motion to that effect?
I will, Chairman.
Is there a second? Hearing none, we'll move on. Item I, and do you have anything further you want to say about it, Brittany?
Um, no. If the board chooses to exceed the, or to change the not-to-exceed amount to 84,000, you could add, you know, just to do periodic checks and then maybe add some sites. We don't necessarily have to spend all of this. It would just, like, right now, we have no, I have no budget to even take on additional monitoring sites, so. And as part of the motion that was previously made, Dan can request a DNR to do minor budget changes within there, but like I said, I don't even have the authority right now with the original motion to even do that, so that's what I'm asking for. Or we could, you know, ask for a plan at the next meeting. I don't know however the commission chooses, but that's what my request is.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
I will move to amend the Spring Creek Monitoring Plan Budget from a not-to-exceed amount of 74,000 to a not-to-exceed amount of 84,000 in order to perform the additional water quality analyses and added additional monitoring sites.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
You know, I'll support this motion for the additional, but I, I would not support it, I guess, if I thought you were just going to go to another lab to have two tests at the, drawn at the same time. It's a duplication, it's a waste. I think you're only reacting to criticisms that you've received, and I think if we're confident that we're doing our job right, then you shouldn't have to go out and double up on the samples. You shouldn't be checking the checker. I mean, you talk about wasting money, that's a, that's a blatant waste of money, in my view. So if I thought you were going to do that, I wouldn't vote for this, but I got the impression after our discussion that that's not what you were going to do.
No, I would like to be able to do additional monitoring from my response from the general public, from the advisory. I, I would like to do some, you know, maybe, you know, a couple samples. I, I would like to do some, you know, maybe, you know, a couple of samples periodically, but not every single time and every sample site.
Again, I, I think if you're just checking the checker, I, I think it's a waste and if you're going to check the checker, then I'm, I'm going to vote in opposition to it.
Mr. Chair. This is me.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Denise Livingston and I just want to say, as an environmental physical scientist that have worked in scientific field, I actually worked for a chemistry lab and in a water treatment facility. And it is a proper protocol to occasionally do those checks and just to make sure that your quality assurance and quality control, it, it's just a best management practice. And so, I think it is a good practice to implement in this program and it would also help to alleviate that potential questioning of the program and, and the sampling and everything. So, it's just a good management practice, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Frankly, I don't think it's going to alleviate the people questioning the project. And, and I don't know, what do, what do you do then? I would ask in your best practices, what do you do when you, when you come back and the, the two samples don't, the, the results isn't the same for this random sampling that you done? What do you do then? Which, which lab do you get rid of and say, they, this guy's wrong and this guy's right?
I don't feel comfortable in answering that. What, what I know is what I did is it just helped me to reassess, is something wrong with the equipment or something wrong with the procedures? And it's just a, a check. I mean, fortunately, you know, you keep up with your, I can't imagine, I can't foresee that there would be an issue. I think when you take a split sample and, and I'm not sure, Brittany made it sound like you'd take two different samples at the same time, but from my understanding, you take one container, take the sample and then from that, you split into two separate bottles so that you have that. But it, it's just a, a method, basically, to make sure. And generally, I would, I would be very, very, very extremely surprised if you came back with two labs coming in with two very different results at that point.
Mr. Chair. Yes. I guess I've never known that there's a portable machine available to do this water testing and if there is, maybe we should be buying one of those to do the backup.
Are you talking about the Dakota Watch program?
Yep.
I'm sorry. What the Dakota Watch program is, it's, it's very minor sampling, so the portable unit is basically an incubator and it's looking at bacteria samples.
Oh, so it's not cut out with Mr. Chair, he says it is, huh?
It's not sampling to the level that the 319 program samples.
Okay.
Okay? So, what the Dakota Watch program is, is a voluntary, volunteer, voluntary monitoring program and it just asks for citizens volunteers, so you're not taking people that have a college education and, and can work in a chemistry lab and such like that, but they're going out there, they're taking the conditions of the weather. Is it rainy? Is it cloudy? Is it sunny? Is it hot? What's the temperature? They're looking at the clarity of the water and then they're able to take samples and do a bacteria sample. And all this is, is to help the state kind of build a database and to look at if there is possibly a concern. Because right now, the state gets out there and samples these water bodies once every three years, which that is really hard to determine if there's a problem. You can pick a good day and have a good sample.
But not.
And then, it, it, yeah, and then the next week, you can start having a contamination issue. So, this is just to help develop a database with the state to give a better idea of, of the health of our water systems. And if something comes up, if there's a question, then that can give the state cause to come out and do more sampling in that area.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and to clarify, Dakota Water Watch is funded by 319 Funds and East Dakota Water Development District.
And Miss, and the gentleman, the new chairman of that is the gentleman that was out here a while back and isn't that right?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Davis, yes.
And took a tour with us of these projects?
Yes.
And said that we were doing it that day, he said we were doing everything right as far as he was concerned.
Correct.
Okay? And so...
Further clarify, Mr. Chairman, I'm a called question.
We don't have a motion, do we? Or do we? Yes, we do. We, we do have a motion. Second it. And a second. Mr. Holloway, seconded the motion. Question has been called. All in favor of the question being called, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One naval. Motion carried. Next item is item J.
Item, excuse me, item J is a request for a contract modification with Respec Inc. There is a memorandum in your pocket, or packet. Sorry, it's been a long afternoon. Anyway, Respec Inc. is requesting that the contract be amended to $322,000 from its current value of $282,000 in accordance with the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, Segment II Amendment outlined in the Statement of Work, which is in Attachment A of the contract. The $40 additional budget is for tasks, three, public outreach, cultural resources, engineering, record-keeping, report and grant writing is in response to the Pendleton County Board of Commissioners' approval of a scope of work in the Spring Creek Watershed Management and Project Implementation Plan, Segment II Amendment. Basically, when we moved that $160,606 over from Segment One into Segment Two, $40,000 of that went into project management. So, that's basically where that increase comes from.
So, instead of doing it in Segment One and paying them the $40,000, you can't move to Segment Two and we're going to pay them the $40,000 here?
Correct.
Correct.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Buskerud, yes.
To make a short story long.
Any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
I'd make a motion to approve the contract modification as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is a second to approve the project contract modification. Any further discussion? Not? Those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Committee reports. Mr. Chair, I don't have anything more to talk about today.
I don't think I do either, Mr. Chairman.
I think I'm done.
We got to go back in the executive session.
Oh, that's right. I got it written down right there.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
We got one more item.
Okay.
Jay just advised me that we have an opportunity to conclude the action relative to the liquor license, but we need a motion to reconsider.
I'll make a motion to reconsider that item.
Yep. Second. That was item D under the auditor, is that correct?
Correct. Fifteen D.
All in favor of the motion to reconsider, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
And give you a little background, obviously, that item you continued to the August 6th meeting. I went and spoke with the auditor, specifically Vicky Wolf, who handles the paperwork and so forth for the liquor applications. She was able to get ahold of Vic Furman, the applicant. I was able to get ahold of Mr. Towley. We brought them together. They met in the hallway out here and Mr. Furman paid cash and satisfied the judgment 100% for Mr. Towley. Both gentlemen were very comfortable with me relaying that so that they could go on their way and I didn't guarantee them anything about the vote you're about to take, but I said that would be information I think would be very helpful and so they parted ways, both, I guess, happy and want the board to reconsider the malt beverage license.
Mr. Chair? Yes. I'd vote to, or make a motion to approve the liquor license as presented on item D under the auditor for sick Vic.
I'll second it.
Motion is a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay. Mr. Davis and Miss, and Commissioner Buskerud both disqualified themselves for making committee reports.
Can I, can I back up a second?
You're too late.
I, I'm going to put on the agenda for next time a motion that I want to consider having this board make texting on your cell phone while driving a county nuisance and our nuisance ordinance would then apply.
Only outside of the municipalities or is that inside too?
It's good to be inside.
So, you're giving...
I'm pushing the limits already, so.
You're, you're giving notice that it will be on the agenda.
I'm giving notice that it will be on the agenda for anybody interested to come in and discuss it.
Does that include law enforcement and all others?
Absolutely. Mainly law enforcement.
Everybody in or driving in Pendleton, Pendleton County, yes?
And mainly to Jay.
Research project.
Okay.
Since the city of Rapid City obviously doesn't care to get involved.
Okay. Commissioner Holloway.
I'm going to remain silent.
So, the last item is executive session. Second one.
I make a motion that we go into executive session for personnel and contractual.
Okay, we have a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion is a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?